Welcome to tonight's pre-meeting for April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, well, first, anybody have any questions? I didn't see any on email, but I haven't seen anything since uh, two thirty this afternoon. So is there anything, questions for tonight's meeting? Yes?
I did have some. I'm having technical difficulties. There we go. Some of these might, uh, these were all regarding the, um, now I'm forgetting if they were informational items or part of the post-session. So, um, one, the reclaimed water system. I just wanted to have a little more information about the, um, how much we can rely on that as part of our overall water planning, and that may be something that comes with the updated plan, but just wanted to see how, whether we knew if that ten percent amount that it contributes to our overall water supply to serve the irrigated areas can actually be expanded with the current system we have. Um, I don't know what to, there's, uh, is there anybody that, oh, yeah, there you are. I have a couple of questions on these things.
On the reclaimed water?
Yeah.
I may not be prepared tonight to answer those exactly, but I can get, get something back tomorrow. We rely on the reclaimed water as part of our overall water portfolio. The system could be expanded. It's certainly part of our conservation efforts to reduce total consumption, very general. So, uh, what was the specific?
Well, I just remember, um, years ago that, I guess I'd been told that we couldn't expand it too much, or at least the water that we had, or the system that we had couldn't really, maybe because we just couldn't produce more based on what was.
And I think you're correct that there are some limitations on how much we can. We have return flow requirements. And so we may be kind of at the, near the end of that.
So, was curious, because I, I saw that we had a twenty, you know, that we had a goal of it being much higher of a percentage of our, um, uh, water, I don't know, irrigation demand. So, up to twenty-five percent. So, that just triggered that question in me.
Yeah, on that, because I've, I've toured that facility and I remember it being presented to us around that and some of the challenges. But it seems to me like the actual facility, we're not even hitting its capacity, I thought, as far as what it's capable of. And I could be wrong, but, I mean, the question that Mayor Protam's asking, I am curious because as we've, there's been other water rights that we've touched since then, and so how has that changed the limitation? So, I mean, two questions. One, I'm curious on the actual physical capabilities of the plant. And then, two, has the levers changed at all in what we can, um, produce? Because we've changed how much water that we have, understanding that that's kind of the lever that dictates how much we can use is how much we're putting out. If that makes sense, because that has changed. I mean, even in my six years, I agree. And the last time we adjusted that is.
And I get you're going through an update soon on that, so maybe those just, now you just have some questions to be able to answer as part of that. Um, the other thing with the water supply, um, item was if we could get a breakout of, um, the per capita use. Right now, we just have, uh, residential as a big, there's a chart, it's figure thirteen. And it just kind of shows a bunch of, uh, it just says residential, commercial, et cetera. But it would be nice to be able to see that residential broken out a little bit more, if it's possible, because we talk a lot about single-family, multifamily differences in the rest of the document. And then, I had another question about the water assistance, uh, item. The, specifically with the loss of the, I feel, I, I'm gonna call it the LIHWAAP. The L I, it's L I H W A P, the, um, it's, they seem to be temporary, um, funds that we were able to use to help with assistance, and we, we spent about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars from those funds. Um, maybe in the last year or two. So I'm just curious if that goes away, because I'm assuming that's, um, not a consistent, uh, funding source for us, that, you know, given the higher demand and utilization for these water assistance pro, assistance programs, um, you know, that's a, that's over, you know, two-hundred percent of what we were using and setting. We had seventy-seven thousand that we've been typically setting aside, so, um, it's kind of, and maybe we don't need to resolve it at this moment, but maybe that comes up in the strategic planning session. It's just kind of getting a better understanding again of what is our, what are our needs moving forward on water assistance? And what are our, uh, funding sources? And then, the other question I had for the water assistance was, do we have any demographic or geographic information regarding, those folks who took advantage of it, so that we can better target?
We probably do. Just didn't put it in the memo, but we'll, I'll look for that.
It would be helpful, because as we look at, um, who's using it now, and then, you know, we have good information from our, our housing needs assessment, and we also know kind of where our demographics are going, so that might, might be able to apply that for future planning.
Councilor Demont, did you have anything else?
No, just wanted to jump on that other question.
Councilor Ireland, did you have any questions for tonight's agenda?
I was just gonna ask about the reclaimed water. If, if the staff knows how many HOAs are giving that, because I've had many HOAs ask me about getting reclaimed water, and I've been told it's tapped out, so, um, I would just like to know more about that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Council, um, reports. Councilor Zadi? Councilor Huck?
Yeah, so on Wednesday, I had the opportunity to observe our wellness court. And, uh, it's very clear that it's making a difference for those in the program. The people in the program are doing the hard work to turn their lives around. But they're able to do it because of the support that our wellness court provides, and so that was, uh, really exciting to get to see that firsthand on Wednesday. And then, on Thursday evening, the human services board met, and, um, we tasked, we tasked them, um, with two things. Um, the first one was to decide if, uh, we wanted to give fewer but bigger awards, or keep it the same, um, for our, uh, grant process. And they, uh, it was very creative. They came up with something in between. And they would like this year to be an experiment, where if there is a, uh, a certain, um, let's say somebody, uh, is looking for a grant, and they're doing something really innovative, or they're doing a really big project, or something that's really exciting, maybe, um, they might consider giving a bigger award for special-type projects, and, uh, see if we get more people applying for grants. By having that option, and seeing if anything, um, if, if anybody bites at that. And if not, um, if there's nothing exciting happening, or if nobody applies for a grant for something like that, then they would keep it the same. So I thought that was, uh, pretty creative to come up with something in the middle. And then, uh, the second thing we had asked them was to see if, uh, simplifying the grant process, uh, might be an option. And, um, they said that it's a standard process, and especially if they're going to potentially be giving bigger awards, they didn't want to simplify it. It's pretty simple already, and, and, um, like I said, um, it was a standard process. So, uh, that's what happened at the human services board.
Councilor Ireland, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Councilor Demont?
A couple of things. So, one, I met with, um, Justin Davis and Chris Lynn. So Justin Davis is the chair of the inclusivity board, and Chris Lynn is the, um, CEO of Senior Resource Center, and that's kind of an offshoot meeting of him visiting the inclusivity board. And, uh, Cody Urb was with us as well, and so the goal was to try to talk about ways that the city can partner with SRC around, uh, senior issues. And so there's going to be some things I'll probably bring to strat planning, but just to kind of give an idea of some of the ideas that were thrown out. It's a lot around what the city can do in terms of helping seniors in the community, and really getting support from Senior Resource Center. So some of the ideas were, is there a possibility to use our volunteer program for people who potentially would want to volunteer to, say, help with groceries for, uh, seniors, or doctors' visits, or some of the stuff that Senior Resource used to do before, you know, their funding didn't allow them to do anymore? And one of the other ideas, um, around that too, was the fact that, you know, obviously, we have a police department who could vet people. So, we weren't sure if that would actually work, or what the liabilities around those things were. But it makes sense to at least have the conversation, because those are areas where there's some service gaps. And we, you know, traditionally have a pretty good volunteer base in the city, and so maybe some of those folks would be interested in that kind of volunteerism. Some of the other ideas they had was just around, uh, community-like neighborhood projects. Um, because Chris really, uh, keyed in on the fact that, you know, being neighborly is very important, and especially with seniors, and checking in on your neighbors, if, you know, you have seniors in your, uh, area. And, uh, the other part that, you know, again, that back to him offering training, so if we did some sort of volunteers or programs that they could work on training, and so some of the things that he brought up that were really interesting and kind of up the inclusivity board's alley is language used when you're dealing with older Americans, and, um, for example, and this is something I would have never thought of, is they don't ever say loved one. And the reason they don't say loved one is you often have somebody who's caring for, uh, you know, maybe a relative who's an elder that don't have those feelings about it. Um, so, and that could go both ways, and so it's an interesting thing, and so there's just ways that that organization has keyed in on some of that stuff to, you know, really help, I guess, keep tension low when, you know, dealing with those different situations. And if you, uh, really dig into those issues, it made a lot of sense. So, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, and I know that's, um, an area that multiple council members have talked about, from transportation to just senior issues. So, hopefully, we can at least make that part of our discussion during strat planning, and, uh, staff maybe can, uh, and I think Cody was gonna take some of those things, staff to staff, and see what they look like, because I think the inclusivity board wants to The other thing that I did was, uh, the CNR. So CNR meeting was, I mean, essentially, we just really talked about the truth with the CNR for the most part. Um, there was an email I sent to Attorney Frankel about what the, in every single group was doing the same thing, as far as what does the IGA say about, um, termination. I looked at it again today, and to me, it says if, and again, I'm no attorney, but if, if I look at the IGA, it says if membership drops below four, then it automatically dissolves. There was not a vote to dissolve it, because multiple members did not, um, have direction from their, their council or their body, so they didn't want to vote. And so the, um, the commissioner from Boulder had said, in her mind, which, you know, there wasn't an attorney there to weigh in on this, so again, I'm going off of what the, you know, the group thought, was, in her mind, uh, an abstention would be a no vote, and so, instead of having a vote, we just didn't vote on it, because they wanted to be able to come back. The chair is, you know, Devin from Broomfield. Broomfield did put their, um, notice in that they're leaving. Boulder intends to put their notice in, but hadn't yet, and there's a thirty-day clock. And so Devin said he would help through that thirty-day clock, but by the time the thirty-day clock hits, he will no longer be the chair, because Broomfield will have left. I guess the commissioner from Boulder should be the one who's chairing the next meeting, even though they're going to be, um, resigning from the group, or leaving, however you want to look at it. Her, her goal during the meeting seemed to be that she was hoping that we would all, as in unison, decide that we were gonna dismantle the group. That's not what, you know, the whole group didn't feel the same way about that. So, um, some of the other things that came out of it, and I really dug into this with the airport director, because it was from the airport director multiple times that I was told, you know, you're not gonna be able to have the Part one fifty do certain things without the CNR. So, it was explained to us this week that a Part one fifty, what it really does is they measure in a certain circumference, and I asked for more information around this, and I haven't got it yet. If I, once I get it, I'm happy to share it. But say, like, your house is right next to the airport, and in your house, the noise goes to a certain level, that, you know, is dictated by the FAA, that says you qualify, then the FAA would actually pay to do mitigation for noise in your home. So, whether that's window insulation, whatever they do to mitigate, and so that's something that just happens. But as far as, like, idea, and this is where there's this weird line of people's language being, uh, confusing to understand. Any of the ideas, like, uh, the nighttime flight paths and stuff that we come up with, that would come out of a CNR. So the Part one fifty isn't gonna necessarily do anything other than what I just explained. So, there's another study, I think it was called like a Part one sixty-one, that might do more, um, but that's not what is happening right now. So, uh, I wanted to bring that back, because I think that, uh, not purposely, I, what I shared with you isn't the way that it was explained this time, so. And somebody did point out, well, that's not what we were told last time, and I also pointed out, like, I want to really understand what you're saying here, because I'm presenting this back to my council, so, and, and our community. The other thing that was brought up, and this was brought up by Devin, was that he is frustrated because the FAA had told him that another thing that could be done is a working group. A working group would not be a public thing, but he said that our IGA prohibits that. Uh, one of the other members since then has sent me a part in our IGA that actually says, or in our charter of the group, that actually says that that's something that we could do. And so, um, I'm not really sure what the disagreement is about that, but it does sound like that's an opportunity, whether it's through, and I asked this question, why don't we just amend the IGA? Because if a working group, that would be a little bit more private, where the FAA pilots and people from the airport, and potentially people from the CNR, or even the community, could have a more robust discussion, that seems like it would be, uh, fruitful. And, um, so, I, I think that that's something that we potentially could look at. At the end of the day, though, we, we don't know what's, what's next, because I don't know what the other groups are gonna do. I do anticipate there being an actual vote next time, although we haven't seen an actual agenda, and when pushed about what the agenda would be, there was pushback, honestly, because I really pushed and said, well, what's gonna be on the agenda? Like, we don't have a chair, so who's gonna run the meeting? And really what it was trying to get at is, are we gonna pick a new chair? And nobody really wanted to talk about, not nobody, but there was a pushback on what the business is gonna look like. So, um, I'm told that an agenda will be worked on between, uh, the commissioner from Boulder, as well as, um, Devin from Broomfield, and so, we'll see what the agenda actually looks like. And as you've probably familiar with, the agenda seemed to come out a couple of days before we actually get to have the meeting, which is, you know, the chair's the one coming up with that agenda, I think, so I'm not really sure why it's so short notice, but. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that was kind of the, the summary of it.
And I would just add, I, I looked at the IGA per your request, and it appears that the IGA automatically terminates in the event there are four members, or fewer, to the agreement. So, if the membership hits four, it appears like it would terminate. Uh, and you're correct, it does provide thirty-day notice, uh, of one member announcing their withdrawal. To your question.
They have to stay at five, then, basically.
Well, I think they're at eight, minus one when Broomfield's clock expires, and there'll be seven. Uh, so, yeah, as long as you have more than four, the, the group would continue, and I think the IGA could be amended, uh, by a majority vote of those that are members.
And Boulder, for sure, said they were leaving. The other question that I asked, and this is something that I think the council should ponder, um, I still see value in there being one. That, the, I, current IGA doesn't mean that there couldn't be a different CNR. You could have a new IGA, and if there are other cities who are willing to look at some sort of, uh, working group, or whatever it is, it may, I mean, the CNR itself, I do, do think is guided by some, uh, guidelines from the FAA. But I did ask that question, like, oh, if this goes away, there's nothing to stop us from forming another IGA, right? And there, there isn't anything stopping us. So, this could go away, and we could decide that we want to, um, you know, do something else that we, we think can serve the community. But I will say that the, the reason why I am still adamant that it makes sense is if the FAA is saying this is where they're gonna listen to you from, whatever we do, we, you know, I think that that's what we should, uh, that should be our guiding, you know, principle, because if nobody's gonna listen, who can make a difference? Why waste, uh, taxpayer money and our time? We have important work we could be doing for the community, so.
Thank you. Councilor Nermal?
I'll just add, perhaps when we have staff come back to us with the, um, study session on RMMA, could we have staff maybe explore what this quote-unquote "working group" might allow us to do? And if it has any standing with FAA, as Devin Chap said?
Yeah, and he did, to add to that, he said he heard that from the FAA. Like, you could have a working group that's, I don't, my understanding of it was it as part of a CNR, but, like, I think that should be dug into, because clearly, some of the things that are said in there, it's like, this is what it is, and I asked for clarification, and I'm told the same thing, then the next meeting, it's re-clarified to be something else. So, um, it would be helpful to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what the rules are.
Councilor Nermal?
Well, since we're, uh, Dr. Cog went over their regional housing needs assessment, wasn't anything, um, more intense, like, breaking things down necessarily to sub-regional, but it'll be just good perspective as we review our housing needs assessment tonight. So, to the extent that it's applicable, I might bring up some comments. I mean, the, the big key takeaways, um, I had mentioned by twenty-fifth, by twenty-fifty, the number of units needed to meet the population demand is five-hundred-and-eleven thousand. And, um, by twenty-thirty-three, so in ten years' time, uh, the need would be two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand units. Two-thirds of those being at the sixty percent area median income level or below. So, um, there's a, again, I mentioned this before, um, that there's a really large gap of, um, approximately two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, of those five-hundred-and-eleven thousand units are within sixty percent of the AMI or below. And then there's some additional need, um, between eighty and a hundred percent AMI, that's about seventy-two thousand units. And, um, even above a hundred-and-twenty percent of the AMI, uh, needed about a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, so. I feel like, whatever AMI you hit, you can't go too wrong, but I, there, there seems to be a decent amount of sixty to eighty percent, because that's because that's where we get a lot of our um current projects being funded, sort of the the sweet spot for those. So um, and um, the big focus is the aging population and smaller household um trends and being able to match those. So um, as that relates to us, you know, we're probably a good microcosm of the region. Um, and then I did uh today join stakeholder meeting for um H B thirteen thirteen, which is the um T O C bill. They just walked through, um, I didn't see anyone from staff, so I would say, um, sorry, it was actually kind of helpful. They they got into a little bit more detail on um, in general, how to calculate things and some of the um uh misconceptions about uh how that calculation is applied. And it was recorded, so I I would just encourage them to take a look at that. It's probably maybe forty minutes of their time if. So. I think that's it.
Um, quickly, um, the Who's Cat meeting um last week was done at the park. Um, tomorrow night, we are meeting because the um facilitator can't be there next week. So we're meeting back to back this week. Um, and um, should start getting into the meat of things, I would guess, because we only have one and possibly two meetings left. So um, some deep conversations going to have to start happening. Um, I had a Jeff Co Mayor's lunch uh last Friday. It was always great to hear what others are doing. Golden um just got a two point three million dollar grant for affordable housing and is um linking up with Habitat for Humanity and doing forty homes downtown. And um, both Golden and Wheat Ridge have done infrastructure um uh um votes to their public. And one did sales tax, one did property tax. Both had good reasons for it and had great citizen input of why they went the way they went. And so just always fascinating to hear. And then probably the most fascinating, and I asked Golden if they were going to do a workshop on this at C M L and she didn't know, but um, their police department, they started with them and went to thirty-two hours. They're paid for forty, but worked thirty-two. And um, she just went over so much stuff they did to get there, but what's happening now? They have less um overtime, uh, they've overlapped things so people can see each other. Um, it it would, I could have sat there the whole day and listened to some of the things that they've been working on. Um, for me personally, I have three rehabs left, yes, I'm going to make it. And uh, today I just finished at four thirty this afternoon, an echo of my heart. And we'll see, um, I actually got to see the new valve working um and assume that it was doing its thing. Uh, and tomorrow I have a total body scan, so that's for the cancer stuff. So um, my week is full of doctor appointments, but I think it's time to go out to the dyes.
We're ready.
Thanks.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City of Westminster City Council Meeting of April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Roll call, please. Carmelia. Demott.
Present.
Azadi.
Here.
Hot.
Here.
McNally.
Here.
Nermella.
Here.
And Ireland. Let me check and see if she's still on.
Mayor, we don't see her on, we'll try to get her back on, we can proceed and then I'll let you know when she's back.
Perfect, she has been with us in our pre-meetings, so as we change things, sometimes we lose people. Do we have a motion to excuse Counselor Carmelia? Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor, I move that we excuse uh Counselor Carmelia.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve excusing Counselor Camer- Carmelia tonight um from this meeting. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting, March twenty-fifth. Uh, Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March twenty-fifth. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to Mayor Protem giving a proclamation celebrating United Power's eighty-fifth anniversary. And I see Mr. Green here tonight, welcome. Come on down. Oh, boy.
Giving, buying Abby some time. All right, let's see. There we go. Okay, well, why don't you come on up and introduce yourself? And I um, I think it's a very unique um organization, so I'd love to hear a little bit about it.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it, Mayor, Council. Uh, I'm Tom Green from United Power, we're probably the good guy in the room today since we didn't have any power outages. A lot of, a lot of that is because of the money we've invested in fire mitigation strategies. So the reason X L did it is to prevent fires and we've done a lot to prevent that, too. Uh, again, we're elected cooperative, we're owned by the members we serve and we do serve a portion of Westminster and that's why we really appreciate you taking the time out to do this proclamation for us. And anybody that would like to, I invite you all to attend our annual meeting, which is April seventeenth. Uh, food starts at four thirty and the actual business meeting is at six thirty. We'll have music, lots of prizes, giveaways, and a lot of information about the cooperative where you can learn things like our fire mitigation strategies that kept us from having outages. But again, we appreciate this honor of making this proclamation on behalf.
Thank you, uh, I will get into uh the proclamation. Um, whereas United Power celebrates eighty-five years of providing cooperative electric service to residential, agricultural, and business members along Colorado's northern front range this year. And whereas the rural electric movement prompted to action the innovative and pioneering spirit that built United Power, the locally owned, not-for-profit electric cooperative powering our community and its residents. And whereas United Power has remained steadfast in its dedication to providing reliable, affordable, and sustainable electricity to our citizens, contributing, contributing significantly to our region's growth and prosperity. And whereas the eighty-fifth anniversary of United Power symbolizes a remarkable milestone in our shared history illustrating the hard work, vision, dedication of its founders, leaders, employees, and members who have contributed to its success and had a positive impact on the lives of our citizens. And whereas the cooperative principles guiding United Power, which emphasize democratic member control, member participation, and community engagement, have fostered a spirit of collaboration with the City of Westminster. And whereas United Power has been a longstanding and trusted energy advisor, offering resources and rebates to local citizens to help them save energy and supporting local businesses with their unique energy needs. And whereas Westminster and its ninety meters served by United Power have benefited from the values of cooperation, stewardship, and community engagement. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim a recognition of United Power's eighty-fifth anniversary and call upon the people of Westminster to join me in congratulating United Power. We celebrate this milestone and express our gratitude to the Electric Cooperative for its enduring contributions to our community.
And Mayor Protem, don't forget the cookies. Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have proclamation for National Volunteer Week by Counselor Hot. And I would ask all of you who volunteer, I don't care if you are a staff member and you live in the city and you give some of your time, or if you are a citizen and give your time, we need you up here with your beautiful faces for this proclamation. I'll come and get you if you don't come down. Oh, and look at that special volunteer we've got there. You can come down and get on the steps.
All right, this is a a big group. Um, if you'd like to introduce yourself?
Diane Svensk, I work in records.
Dennis Emily, open space.
Holly Arnett with Arvada Jefferson Kiwanis.
Steve Kretzel, just resident of the city.
Jana Kretzel.
Linda Grabiel, President of the Westminster Historical Society and also serve on the Historic Landmark Board.
Bob Grabiel, Westminster Historical Society Board Member.
George Smith, Historical Society.
Jordan Ellison, I volunteer at the parks.
Tammy Chaponium, an archive coordinator.
Carol Hatfield, S P L V.
Martin Zalinski, Elections Commission.
Harley Armstrong, Finance and Archives.
I'm Martha Hines, the volunteer coordinator for the City of Westminster.
Uh, John Romelfanger, I volunteer for the Special Permit and Licensing Authority. I'm going to say a little bit more, if anybody has an opportunity to sign up for the Civic Academy, please do it, it's worth your time.
To your left.
Jeannie Jones, uh, Parks and Rec, Police and Fire.
I'm Gary Bland and this is my grandson Zach. We actually adopted a street over there, Independence, from eighty eighty-eighth all the way down to Wadsworth. And I can tell you what, we do a good job.
My name is Desmond McMahon and I'm a snowbuster.
Angelica McMahon, snowbuster.
Ariam McMahon, snowbuster.
Ally Witter, I'm a snowbuster and I volunteer with fire as well.
Steve Major in Yukon, and we're volunteer victim advocates.
Debbie Oster, Victim Services. Thank you. So we um, this proclamation is for uh National Volunteer Week. So uh whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes in the world, or that changes the world. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas the experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems. And whereas our country's volunteer force of more than sixty-three million is a great treasure. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as caring and a productive nation. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through April twentieth, twenty twenty-four, the City of Westminster National Volunteer Week. And urge my fellow ci- citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference.
Oh, girlfriend.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and for all the work that you do. Uh, we need a motion for Counselor Ireland to be excused tonight.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we excuse Counselor Ireland from tonight's meeting.
Do I have a second? Counselor Hott?
Uh, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor of excusing Counselor Ireland for this meeting, I think she's going to join us for our post-meeting. But for this meeting, um, all those in favor of, um, excusing her, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That brings us to public comment. Recently, I just want to, I'm going to be saying this for a few times, so that everybody gets used to it. We changed our protocols and how things will be. So, tonight, we haven't met it. But if we do meet more than 24 people signing up, we will go to three minutes per presenter from the first presenter on. So, that's just to let you know. The public comment portion of this meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the City Council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item of which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when that public hearing is called. Tonight, there is a public hearing on the consideration of an ODP for Uplands filing three, Block A, PAC two. This evening, the City Clerk has informed me that we have received, uh...
We received eight emails and four voicemails that were transcribed and attached to the packet.
Right, and that's a new thing, too. The voicemails were received by deadline, and they have been posted to the online agenda packet and forwarded directly to City Council. City Clerk, would you please call the first speaker?
The first speaker is Gary Bland.
Welcome.
Welcome. I got one of my glasses, so I can read what I wrote. It's my grandson. You'll get to meet him in a minute, because he's the next speaker.
And if you would bring the microphone, so people can...
You're right, you want to hear me, so here we go. Tell me when. Oh, it's good. Okay, um, I'm Gary Bland, Westminster resident. And this is my grandson. He'll be speaking next. Uh, I've got a proposed idea for Westminster. Actually, play tennis. You can probably see that. What I'm proposing is that the city sit there and look at the avenues for lighted courts, probably 12 of them within the city of Westminster for a lot of reasons. And we'll get to that here in just a second. Most of our tennis courts are unusable for, you know, for many years now. And I'm looking at it, it's like, I know that I get a new one. I've been engaging with a lot of you guys, and appreciate that. I want to compare some of the benefits when you sit there and look at an Apex. I'm going to use a comparison with Apex Tennis Center of Arvada. They have 494 members, okay, today. I'm part of that group. I play tennis with them because of the inability to pay, you know, play in Westminster. They have a membership fee. I just kind of want to give you some historical things. I just did real quick. The membership fee at $120, their operating costs start out with at least, I'm going to round it up, to $60,000. That's a starting point. It doesn't count some of the other numbers for drills and so on. You'll see, this will progress. There's other people speaking in terms of this. I looked up Christopher Field. I want to go over this a little bit, too. If you look at the daily rental on that, it's 1,400 a day. I'm looking at the calculated days using a Saturday, Sunday, Friday. So, I calculated that the usage of that was probably 28 days. So, their start-off revenue is about $39,000. Nowhere even comparable to just a membership for Westminster, I mean Apex Tennis Center. Uh, we have some soccer fields. I look at some of the rentals there. Uh, they acquire 60 an hour, a large field, 110. I love soccer, I can tell you that. I'm going to step into the Westminster City Park. I watched that get built. That's how long I've been here. That is a fantastic, fantastic recreational center. To sports, swimming, a lot of things, soccer. Everything's there for a lot of Westminster, but we're missing tennis. So, my request is, we need a tennis complex facility in Westminster. I think you need to sit there and put this up for our future residents. One right here that's going to speak here in a minute. And, you know, I want, I just think it's, 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 tennis is an open area for of all ages. I'm retired, but he is going to be what I want to leave anything for. And this tennis facility would make me happy. Okay, so now I just want to talk about, I've been to Broomfield. I've been doing a lot of tournaments lately. Their membership out there, Broomfield Swim and Fitness Center, has 350 members. They, they, they limit it. They pay $1,000. Their opening, starting revenue is 350, not counting the UST events that go on. I want to emphasize, they have three of them, and this is just one facility. They engage in a thousand people. They do the number-one highest amount of people playing tennis in the state of Colorado. I want to make a fact. So, I did some calculations real quick. I paid $35 to get into that tournament. If I do doubles, it's 50, so that's 85. So, I just want to roughly cover this real quick. So, $35 times 1,000 is $35,000 revenue just for that one event. And if I add the other one, and everybody does what I do, there's another $50,000. It is a cash cow for them. The event only lasts five to six days, so it's roughly about $10,000 a day for playing tennis. So, I'm going to do up in closing. I want to save a lot of time here. I still got a minute, so I'm going to take a little bit of time on this. So, in closing, there's thousands of us out there. And we're talking the whole, everywhere. There's thousands of us that want tennis. We're losing, we're losing a lot of facilities right now. Iverness, Inverness, uh, they, they closed that complex because of condominiums. The property value's gone up, they taken it away. It was a nice court. They took it away from us. That was a great place, by the way. So, I just wanted, I really want to emphasize, and I want every one of you to hear what I have to say. You have this strategic planning thing, and you need to hear me. This is for him, my grandson. Got to stop. I'm almost out of time. But anyways, I want you to, I want you to look at this closely. And you'll see, there's more people representing me. So, I'm going to give up my time now. You can go ahead and stop this. He's the next speaker.
The next speaker is Zach Bland.
Okay. This is going to be a little hard, so...
There, that podium, there's a button in the bottom low right. And if you push the button, you can move, it doesn't move down much more, but it does move down.
Oh. Oh, I see. Oh, perfect. Thank you. You know what to say. Say hi to Nancy. Start out that way. Here, talk in here. Say hi, Nancy. You remember me? Introduce yourself. Say hi, Nancy. Hi.
Hi, it's Nancy. So, I, I'm out Lucas, and you came to my show and greeted me a bird. And I'm in Miss South and South.
Tell her that you enjoyed the Facebook communication with her, that you were surprised...
And I conveyed the Facebook message with you.
Nancy's really good about communicating, that's for sure. And then tell her, tell them what you want in Westminster. What do you want in Westminster?
And I want a tennis court in that way.
And we live in Westminster.
Westminster.
You're hearing it from somebody here. I think, no matter what I say, it's him. We mean listening. Thank you. We're done.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and visiting us, Zach.
The next speaker is Daniel Hoffman. Now, I'll remind you, there's a button in the bottom right of the, so you can, it's, it's on, on, yeah.
This button? Well, I can, I can speak with this. This is fine. Well, first of all, hello, Council. Good evening. You know, I've lived in Westminster for 41 years. And I see the demographics changing. I saw my kids go to Pomona High School, which was a great sports center. It was a pride of Colorado. I have a grandson who goes to Ralston Valley. He went there because my daughters and their husbands decided to move out into Arvada, because there's more recreation there. And the demographics, the demographics of Pomona High have changed quite a bit. One of the coaches at Ralston Valley told me that, you know, Pomona's no longer the powerhouse of sports like it used to be, because demographics have changed, demographics. I'm part of that demographics. I'm 74 years old, and I've seen the city grow, and I've seen it decline. I live in the Standing Lake subdivision. There used to be there a Kings Mill, a library, a pool, tennis courts, and a few other things. The tennis courts that are there are very shabby. They have big cracks in them. It's like, the young people, and I was in the real estate business for 40, over 40 years. And people are looking for a place to grow and a good place for their children. And I've debated on the fact of moving to another city, to another state, and take my money with me. I have a lot of money. I want to stay in Westminster for a reason. I've been happy in Westminster, but I see it declining. I think that more has to be spent on the recreation of what was done here to bring the city up to, up to code to the other cities around us. Because Westminster's like an island. There's, it's surrounded, there's no real growth anymore of land acquisition. And all I think I see is apartments being built everywhere. I waited over 25 years for this Westminster Mall to, that was torn down, to be built, built up again. I own two town, I used to own two townhouses across the street. I got tired of waiting. I sold them. At my age, I was only going to live so long. But there's a lot of people like me in Westminster. And Mr. Bland was talking about with his grandson, and I have my grandchildren. I have grandchildren that are going to college. I have grandchildren that are about to go to college. I have one that's about to graduate from high school. I'd like them to stay in the area once they complete their education. But what, what do they have to draw here? They have plenty of soccer fields and baseball places. There's nothing for tennis. And I've listened to Mr. Bland talk about what he needs for the future. And I don't think there's enough recreation in Westminster for people to stay here. And I yield my, rest of my time to Mr. Bland and his people that came with him. But I just wanted to speak tonight to tell you that, as a longtime resident of Westminster, I remember Westminster when it, when the city hall used to be over here on Turnpike Drive, way, way out there by Federal. And I've seen the city grow. I've been proud of the city. But I fear that it's going to decline in a faster way, because we don't focus on the revenues of that bringing, brought in by recreation. And people need to be aware of that, especially if they want the city to grow more and to attract more people. And with that, I'm done. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Jason Bolton.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is Jason Bolton. I am the President of Apex, Apex, of North Jeffco Tennis. About 10 years ago, we embarked on a project to build a new tennis facility in Arvada. We have tennis players from all over the North Jeffco area. Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, Arvada, Golden, Westminster, and Boulder as well, Thornton. We, everywhere. We basically suck in tennis players from all over the place. It was a really, really powerful bringing together of a very large community. Colorado is, kind of goes back and forth year to year. Either the number-one tennis state in the country or the second-biggest tennis state in the country with Georgia. Last year, we ended up being the biggest tennis-playing state in the, in the entire country. That also adds into the fact that we're the largest tennis-growing state in the country as well. And when, uh, when we were hearing previously the loss of tennis courts, it's something that's happened primarily because of development. So, large facilities are seeing a payout for being able to sell their private facility for, for, you know, real estate development. So, we've lost a ton of courts in, in the Denver metro area here over the last several years. This year alone, it's over 50, uh, between Boulder, North Jefferson County, Denver, and, and down in Highlands Ranch. So, that's basically orphaning about 2,000 different tennis players. And that's, and when I, when I talk about that kind of number, I'm talking about league tennis players. So, league tennis just started this last weekend, and it is, you couldn't, if you don't play it, you can't even imagine how actually big it is. Every tennis court, basically, in the north side of Jefferson County is being taken up by our club. Gary actually undersold us a little bit. So, this last year, we were 590 members. The year before, we were about 612 members. So, we're a very, very large club. And we are looking for space all the time. We're playing out of 12 different facilities aside from the Apex Tennis Center. Building a facility that is, you know, something in that 12 to 15 courts, lighted facility, not only would it be like a huge, you know, draw for your community, but one of the things that we've found, and we were able to work really, really closely with the City of Arvada and with the Apex Park and Rex Board, to make sure that when you build that facility, that you're also building a tennis community. And that's having the, the right people run the facility, the right pros, they can, they can build programming. And what's one of the real benefits for you as a city with that is tennis is a moneymaker. It's not a joke. There are four basic facilities in the Apex Park and Rex District that actually make money out of the 18 facilities that are in the, are in the Apex Park and Rex District. And what that does is that with tennis being a moneymaker, it actually funds the other facilities that don't have the same kind of revenue pull. But when you're a city and you're trying to, you know, help out as many people as possible and bring as much recreation to as many people as possible, that's not free. And with tennis, the one thing that we do is we're unafraid of spending money. Lessons, drills, leagues, especially for kids. The children, the, the kids' tennis program in the City of Arvada and the Apex in particular is absolutely booming to the point where they have a hard time keeping or having enough space and facility for those kids to actually be able to, to play in their programs at this point. So, it, there's a huge, huge amount of people that are really trying to get into these programs. And especially with a municipality being one of the drivers of this, it's a much, much more inexpensive way for, for kids and for families to get involved in tennis than the private clubs are. You know, obviously, there's a huge difference in cost amount for how much it is for someone to be involved in a private club versus a public club. So, I really think that it would be a huge benefit for, for your city. I think we would, we have tons of different resources. We'd be willing to help you and help guide you in getting that facility pulled together. And I think we would absolutely kick... kick butt in bringing tennis to Westminster.
Thank you, and your time is up. The next speaker is Kevin Thistle. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Kevin Thistle, and I'm on the board at North Jeffco Tennis Club. I'm also a real estate appraiser for thirty years. And I was part of the team that Jason headed up seven, ten years ago, where we took the old eight asphalt courts at the Arvada Tennis Center and totally redid those, and, you know, they're concrete post-tension. And not only has tennis grown, but the technology has changed, whether it's the rackets or the balls, and also the courts and the model that we use. Because the model that is thirty, forty or more years old is, you get a couple of courts, you know, in each little neighborhood. And that's nice, but they don't get the use that, that they could get. And is, we have a lot of teams that play USTA tennis, a lot of different leagues. And you really need a minimum of five or six courts per facility, and that's why, you know, that's what helped to, you know, to justify the need when we redid that facility. And the local courts, they do fall out of repair. Westminster isn't, you know, unique in that way, they all are, but, well, as maybe some of you know, pickleball's also a growing kind of a thing. And that's also private, but they take the local courts and they, and they put stripes on them, and you can either play tennis or pickleball. But you can't play league on those two little courts. So I have found professionally, as an appraiser, that, that these public amenities, whether it be swimming or hockey, or soccer fields, or tennis, you know, is a real positive thing. I remember when we were speaking to the Apex Rec Board many years ago, one of the members was saying that he didn't think tennis was growing. Matter of fact, he said from October to April, seems like nobody plays tennis. And I sort of chuckled a little bit and pointed out that, well, our leagues go from April to October, or late September, and also snows. But we continue playing, but we go out of the area to play. And I named off all the different facilities where we, where we play. And where, where it was a real benefit was, was for the kids. I mean, us whole folks can go anywhere and play anywhere that we want, but all the high schools around there, you know, Pomona, Arvada, Arvada West, you know, the rest of them, they benefit from that facility and their pros. And they also benefit from our club because we do a lot of volunteer work that way. So we have found that it's a very positive amenity, and as Jason said, it's actually a net positive moneymaker, which surprised some people, but it didn't surprise us because we, we did our research. So thank you very much for your time and your attention, have a good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Rowan. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, council members. My name's David Rowan. Just kind of piggybacking off of these recent previous presentations, I want to start by mentioning how I met Gary. We actually just met face-to-face for the first time tonight, but we've been in communication for the last couple of months because my fiancee and I moved here from Boulder in June, and I was looking for a new tennis team, a league team. And Gary was the guy. Reached out to the USTA, the United States Tennis Association, and they pointed me to Gary. And he, boy, just about knew everything about tennis in this area, as you can see demonstrated by the talk that he gave. And so we were in communication for a while, I was driving home one night, and I look up and I see that this road had been adopted by Gary Bland, and I thought, oh, I know that name. So it turns out that we live two streets across from each other, and I have to say, I just love that sense of community. And what would make it even more rich for us is if we could walk together, two blocks over to Kings Mill Park and play tennis together on those courts. And I'm sure we're not the only two people who have that desire. And Gary let me know that, you know, it's underway to, to repair and rehabilitate that court. And that's just great, and I hope that it's only the beginning. To cite some other facts, sort of just, again, reiterating stuff that was already mentioned, Colorado has been number one in tennis growth, either number one or number two for the last four years. Forty-six percent of league play happens on public courts, so we really need those public courts. I'm all for a facility like Apex. I sometimes go and play at Apex. I have to pay a non-resident fee because I live in Westminster, so it's more expensive for me, which I understand. That's how their, you know, pricing structure is set up. And wouldn't it be nice if I had the option to play in my own city? Rocky Mountain Tennis Center in Boulder is shutting down, and there's movement to maybe, maybe not, start a facility in open space, like up towards Gun Barrel. And a lot of players up in arms about that, and I understand there are tensions between, you know, preserving open space and all the various needs of any municipality, any city. And I think there's a way to, to compromise and find the best of both worlds for all parties. And also for me, you know, on the, on the note of public courts, like, I'm a blue-collar guy, I work at FedEx, I love to play tennis, and I'm not going to be in any country club anytime soon, so public courts are really important to me, to have a place to go. And when I think of that Kings Mill Court, you know, we walk the dog by there sometimes, there's a skate park, there's some other nice, like, it seems like it's got a little bit of just like that, you know, weed that wants to sprout up through the cement of like, yeah, there's, there's life here, but it's not quite there yet, and there's something about, you know, okay, people are playing tennis, now what else can we bring there? And people want to have, you know, it's a place that people want to sit and have a picnic or sit in the park, or taking their kids to soccer game, or what have you. I just think there's more room for it to be more bountiful and flourish and life, you know, when you look at it, see life blossoming. And like I said, I know it's not the only place, and I also don't know what all the other places are because there aren't that many of them. And some of that is for me because I'm still new and learning the area. But most often, when I go to play tennis, it's in Boulder, it's in Louisville, it's in Longmont, it's in, you know, it's outside of Westminster, bottom line. Even the closest court to me that I love to play is just on the other side of the line. It's in great shape. It's a newer court, Alice Sweet Thomas Park. I go to the backboard there all the time. So a good model, maybe, to look at. I guess lastly, I'll just say, as was mentioned already, I sometimes play pickleball, I'm not, you know, as excited about it as I am about tennis, but I know that it's also a fast-growing sport and that there are needs there as well. And, and just to reiterate, like, I think there's room for both. It's really important for tennis players to have dedicated courts, and, and I think, yeah, just, at the risk of repeating myself, that there's plenty of room for both to exist and to exist peacefully. And Countryside is another park that I know about in Westminster that has really, at least a tennis facility with a lot of potential. There's lights, there's wind screens, I mean, it's, those are the little things that if you're a tennis player, like, oh, this, this really goes a long way for the tennis experience. And two of those courts got converted into, into pickleball. It's not like a total deal-breaker, but it's just, it doesn't flow as well for tennis players to have it be kind of multi-use in that way. So, see that I'm rounding out my time, thanks so much for your attention, have a good evening.
Thank you. The next person is Chelsea Augusto. Welcome.
Hi, I'm the fiancee, and I actually don't have that much to say, I didn't know it was going to be so formal and official, but I just basically echo everything these guys have already said. I think that we've really enjoyed moving here, and to me, I think what feels really special about focusing on upgrading tennis facilities is that it does bring a sense of community and probably will bring Westminster more money, so if that's relevant, then I'm for it. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person is Andrew Guthrie. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, hello and good evening. Give me just a second. Good evening, Mayor McNally, Mayor Pro Tem Normella, my name is Andrew Guthrie, and I'm here to talk about tennis balls, specifically tennis balls in dogs' mouths. Because I, I'm sorry, that joke was low-hanging fruit, I had to go there. I, I am the Westy Dog Park Guardian, member of the Who's Cat team. As I mentioned in last council meeting, I'll come here and give periodic updates on the Who's Cat progress, making sure that we're all on the same page moving forward. This second of four Who's Cat meetings, so we're halfway there, we took a tour of the dog park, which was great. I'd like to start off by thanking the staff that maintains our beautiful dog park, including Spencer, Michael, Hayden, Liam, and Sean. They were all wonderful people and truly committed to keeping the dog park the best resource for Westminster. The entire PRL team, including Director Herrera Michler, were open and engaged in conversation. They allowed us to ask tough questions and appeared to genuinely want to find solutions. One very encouraging discussion point revolved around the proposed reduction to thirty-three acres, from four hundred and twenty acres to thirty-three acres. We discussed the condition of the other dog parks within Westminster, and we saw how barren those other dog parks have turned. And it really came, came to a head where it seemed like everyone wanted to avoid having this thirty-three acres turn barren. So I, I think we got over that initial proposal and really started to move forward in other options besides just the wholesale reduction to thirty-three acres. We also discussed the entrance from the Sim Street parking lot. And if you've ever been out there, no one will question, we all agree that this area needs some TLC, absolutely. There was a great suggestion by a Westy employee, and I apologize if I forget who actually said it, there are a lot of people going around, but this employee mentioned funneling dog park users further into the park, allowing them to distribute more, in a more orderly fashion. I thought that was a fantastic, well-open-minded thinking, and I really appreciated it. To wrap up the second meeting, we had a funny little anecdote in that we were meeting at a trail-closed sign, and people kept coming in from the other side. Created quite a visual, but, you know, in their defense, the barricade was completely down on the other side, they, there was no way for these individuals to know that the trail was closed. But this, this had turned a negative into a positive by allowing for good dialogue around the need for clear communication. And thanks again to the PRL team for the informative meeting. As I stated, we're halfway through this process, and we haven't even touched on the core issues. That's, we have our next meeting tomorrow, so I'm hoping that we can really touch on the key issues, first of all, being the neighborhood parking. We, us Guardians are determined to be good neighbors, and we see the need for immediate action, since we're at the beginning of the season, and we want to help build those habits of people who do use the neighborhood parking. We want that to stop, we want to be good citizens for, for all of the neighbors. Finally, I'd like to offer a little bit, little bit of feedback for future cat committees, if the city is planning on doing any cat, any future cats. When we applied to be members, the form said, quote, "Members of the cat are expected to attend all four scheduled meetings," end quote. This statement caused many qualified applicants to self-select out in respect for the process. In reality, we've already had to change a scheduled meeting date, and we even have a member who hasn't shown up to a single meeting. All I ask is future cat criteria be applied equally between citizens and city staff, present and future. That's all, thanks a lot, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sandy Lane. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor McNally, and Mayor Pro Tem Normella, and esteemed councilors. My name is Sandy Lane, and I am a Westy Dog Park Guardians member and volunteer, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. We are continuing to meet at a, as a, as a growing grassroots group of passionate dog owners and engaged citizens who are concerned about the preservation of our valued dog park, as well as, as well as, as well as moving forward with the mission to retain our beloved off-leash dog park. We are actively generating ideas and researching solutions to save the valued community space. Our core group met last Sunday, or last Saturday, March thirtieth, for the, for a very productive, informative meeting that further organized our services and solidified our commitment to the community and assisting park management in maintaining valuable or viable solution. I am one of five members of a new subcommittee to organize volunteers and disseminate educational park information, which benefits both park and recreational as well as Westminster dog park community. We will educate and emphasize alternative parking solutions, as well as, to, as well as instill dog poop pickup and inform park visitors of the proposed park changes. Some examples of our expansion include, we now have six thousand three hundred and fifty-five signatures on the change.org petition in support of preserving the current size of the off-leash dog park. Facebook followers have grown from three to three hundred and sixty-three followers and continue to rise. Our mailing list is approximately three hundred and growing. We distribute our newsletter twice a month, and petition, petition signatures, Facebook followers, and our mailing list have significantly increased in the past two weeks. We are encouraged, we are encouraging Facebook followers to sign up for the Great Global Cleanup Day by stating its importance and directing them to the city's signup link. Volunteer hours are scheduled for the park duty through the weekends in April, and we plan to continue with the schedule or similar throughout the coming months. The volunteer subcommittee plans to increase our social media presence on additional platforms besides Facebook. Currently, we are communicating with a well-known local athlete who possibly fundraising for Westminster, for Westy Dog Park Guardians. She was recently featured in media, in media concerning her training and passion for preserving Westminster Dog Park, Westminster Hills Dog Park. Like me, she has chose to live in Westminster, close to our beloved park, and, and close to, for her love of nature and freedom of her dogs. Westy Dog Park Guardians are eager to schedule another park cleanup, cleanup day in coordination with Parks and Recreation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is David White, White, I apologize. Welcome.
Good evening. First thing I'd like to thank the Westminster Police Department for what they're doing for, for our territory right now. They've been a good help, but we're in dire, dire trouble. The drugs have taken over, and we are at risk day and night. And we have got to do something a little bit farther to get this situation done. I've got pictures of the needles that are laying around, where all the drugs are going around out there laying, this is just one picture, there's probably about five or six of these laying around. They come in and deal their drugs. I know who they are, I can't do anything about it. That's why I'm asking for your help. This young lady here, we'd like to tell you what happened to her today.
So we-
Could you just give us your name, please?
I'd like to be anonymous.
Okay.
We have at least twelve children in our cul-de-sac, all young children. I have two under the age of five, and there are syringes being left around our cul-de-sac. We have parents picking up syringes because- We have parents picking up syringes because there are drug deals going on in our neighborhood.
This has started over a year ago, and I have taken records of how many people that I have got kicked out of the neighborhood of their drug dealing. I've asked them to leave. Most of them don't want to leave, but they do. They get their drugs and they go. This mostly happens during the daytime, but most of the time it happens at night. The police department is doing a very good job of doing it, but they can't catch them. And I don't know if they don't know how. The task force is on it, but it just doesn't seem like it's going. We've got to do something about our neighborhood. So I'm asking for your support to get with the police department and help us out of a very, very bad situation. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And I just want to add, this is Highland Hills we're talking about. We're having drug deals going on behind our fence while our children are playing in the backyard.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sharon Harrison. Welcome.
Hi. Thanks for giving me a couple minutes to talk with you all. I'm Sharon Harrison with the Lexington HOA. And we've spoken a couple of times to city council. I was made aware of an agenda memorandum, and I want to make sure that I thank the four people that participated in preparing it. I know it takes a lot of time and effort to put together this kind of information. It was very detailed. I am, though, highly concerned about some of the misinformation that isn't contained in this report. And I think before the city council decides to make any decisions, I need to make you aware of what those things are. Looking at the report itself, on page three, it talks about, excuse me, an eight-foot-wide concrete path. And when I have measured it at seven feet, so when you're looking at numbers, those numbers should not ring true, because that's not how wide the path is. We talked in the past about the risk of a slip-and-fall injury because of the ice that forms on our path, even though we try very hard to keep it clean. And we take every measure we can think of. But we're still, as a community of 126 homes, at risk for that. I have spoken in the past about the accident that happened the other year, and we had a claim we paid for. And our insurance, like many insurances, has gone up tremendously. We had to go onto the secondary market to get insurance for our HOA. And we have no amenities in our neighborhood, none. The HOA at the last meeting requested that the city take the path. And we were very clear that the HOA would continue to water, mow, and maintain all of the landscape around that, because there are detention ponds, drains, swales that only benefit Lexington. And I was completely shocked to see that prices were put in here for taking that piece of properties from us. First of all, it does not benefit anybody in the city other than Lexington. It is our responsibility. We know it's our responsibility. I don't understand why there is pricing in there for you taking property that we have not asked you to take. Furthermore, it talks about a sign that's posted at the McKay Lake Connection stating that it's a private path for Lexington residents only. We did not ask you to take this path. This path has to remain as a private path. We had a lawsuit a number of years ago about this, and we did not ask you to take it. So again, this is a major mistake in this document. Again, they talk about the Westminster Trail map and the fact that it has non-Westy and Westy trails on it. But the most damaging piece of evidence that I have is something that city staff created. And I gave you all a copy of this the last time I was here. And it shows our trail as an existing trail on the Westminster Trail system. Our ODP talks about the fact that the city of Westminster could take our trail as it becomes part of a regional trail system. And we can certainly see from the map that that's what's happening. Some other misinformation that was contained in this document on page four, it talks about the fact that the trail would have to remain open for use by anybody. We can't keep anybody off of this trail. We don't even try. We are prescient of the fact that the city planners had the foresight to put together a trail system like this for everybody in the city. But talking about, you know, the continuum of compassion for homeless people, we have already experienced homelessness coming into our neighborhood. I don't think there's any neighborhood in Westminster that hasn't. You know, so I don't think that making this part of the Westminster Trail system officially would have an impact on that. Certainly, you know, as homeowners, we don't like to see that. But that's a reality that we all live with in this world today, right? It talks about the Westminster Municipal Code and that the public trails are open again 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And our trail is definitely open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We do not do anything to close it. So then on page five, it talks about the 2.61 acres that surrounds Track B and the cost that the city would bear to maintain that. And again, we did not ask the city to take this. It talks about the landscaping, the water, the trash collection, the dog bag stations. We do all of that in our community ourselves. We have our own dog bag stations. I get to empty them sometimes. So does another resident. We take our turns. We're not asking the city to build in amenities that really should be cared for by our community. Snow removal obligation is also mentioned, and I think the HOA could work with the city because we realize you're not sending people up into this area to make that happen. The one last thing is when we look at the challenge for precedent of the city, 32 miles are non-city trails, but our city, our neighborhood has no sidewalks. We are the only neighborhood that is part of this 32 miles that has no sidewalks. This is our sidewalk. This is where our kids learn how to ride bicycle. So I really feel like the city has an obligation here.
And your time is up.
All right. Thanks, Nancy.
The next speaker is Dennis Emily. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Dennis Emily. I'm the vice president of our HOA. And I might be repeating some of the things that David said. I've lived here in Westminster for over 20 years. And I'm proud of this city and what it's done. However, this drug dealing that's been going on for over a year has really, it's a major concern, big time. First of all, it's gone over a year. I talked to one of the officers about a month ago. And prior to that time, we've had people, we've called on the drug dealing that's been going on. And in some cases, nobody has come out. They don't have any proof. It's been ridiculous. And then the last officer that I did talk to, that was about three weeks ago, when I told him what was going on, he says, "We don't have anything." And somebody dropped the ball. And I really, it really upset me, not only for that, but for the drug, for the needles that we have found. And the police says that this type of drug dealing is okay, because it's minor. So if that's okay, and I have to ask, how do they know what type of drugs that they're using? What type of drugs are they using as far as making whatever they're dealing with legal? And if that's the case, how about the syringes and needles that are found in our commons area? And like David said, in some of the homes? Just imagine you had a kid, you had a child, and they touched that syringe. It would be devastating. And we know who's coming into our cul-de-sac. I've notified the officer as far as the time goes. And what's interesting about it, this guy, one of the cars, David, who is up here, has 29 different license plates, 29. But the car that comes in, comes in very slowly, and then he darts out. And sometimes there'll be two of them, and they'll dart each way. But the thing is, he doesn't have a license plate. He hasn't had a license plate for over a year. Now, is there a new law that I'm missing here that you don't have to have license plates? I mean, this guy has been out there for over a year and no license plate. We all have to have license plates, as far as I know, but he doesn't. Right there, I saw this guy four times within the last week. Anyway, I also have to question how they know, how the police know it's one of these drugs that's okay? Because that's what I understand. There's a law now that was passed that certain amount of drugs are okay. And I don't know how they even got that information in the first place to discuss that. Anyway, we just want to make you aware. The officer that I did talk to when I got back from California was right on top of it. And very proud of what he has accomplished. He's got back to me. Yes, there is a task force that's working on it, and very thankful for that. I just hope that something can be done, because with almost 15 kids in our little development, it's just not right. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew Simmons. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I always try to be a little ray of sunshine whenever I get here, so thank you for having me. As you said, my name is Matthew Simmons. I'm representing the Downtown Westminster Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, Downtown Westminster Business Association. I'm here with a fellow colleague of mine from the DWBA, who will be introducing himself in a few minutes. Our association has been proud to host several of you in our businesses downtown. We've enjoyed getting to know you and hear your perspective and vision for what you've seen and want us to be. We hope to meet all of you, and the offer for coffee still stands. From multiple sources, we've learned that our residency for the apartments sits at about 95% to 97% occupancy. Our businesses are vibrant and growing. We have two new restaurants coming soon. We have a variety of organizations who are planning events in the Central Square. We're excited for the Downtown Westminster Central Park, and we have big plans for it. We're looking at what challenges our businesses face as we move in, establish ourselves, operate, and continue to grow. We're learning about what resources we have through the city and are excited about our growing alliances. The DWBA will soon have a public-facing Facebook page, which will link through the Westminster Chamber of Commerce and hopefully be able to link through our city's website as well. We have internal emails for our meetings. At their request, we've added a few of our councilors to this list, and they'll know of our upcoming meetings, agendas, and minutes. If you're interested, let us know, and we'll add you too. So as several of you have shared yours, we are developing our vision as well. Namely, we see Downtown Westminster as the crown jewel for our city. In fact, we want to be the destination for the Highway 36 corridor. In a world that is growing apart, it's our vision that we are building a community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charlene Wiley. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the council. As I have done many times for the past six years, I've updated you with emails on April the 5th and the 7th about the issue of continuing membership in the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport's Community Noise Roundtable since its last meeting on April 4th. I'm aware from the acknowledgement of some of you that these communications were received, and so I'm aware that all of you are in possession of them. Tonight, I hope you'll join me in establishing a new ethic of respect for the community members who have devoted hundreds of hours to provide you with reliable and verifiable data as you make these life-altering decisions that affect the lives of up to a million people who live along the Front Range and are affected by this airport, including thousands in Westminster. You are responsible for the health and welfare of all Westminster citizens and have an obligation to protect our air, our water, and our health, especially from controllable sources like this airport. At the very least, you are required to read this information and seek further clarity if you have questions. I realize it's complex, but ignoring it simply isn't an option. My communications provided a brief summary of the meeting, an independent news coverage of the April meeting, FAA guidelines for the structure of a CNR, a copy of the IGA governing the CNR, a description of the process to leave the CNR and separately to dissolve it, many verifiable examples showing that Jefferson County has been acting in bad faith in this negotiation. And I also provided an analysis showing the unreliable process used to develop so-called economic benefit of this airport, and a counter-analysis showing increased healthcare costs to the community from RMMA operations that far exceed any calculations of economic benefit to this community. In witnessing the discussions that have taken place in this council for the past several years, it's clear to me that many of you do not seem to understand this issue, either because you've not taken the time to learn or because you've embraced the misinformation that Jefferson County continues to use as it deals with everything related to RMMA. Let me point out some examples. The CNR is Westminster's voice to the FAA. That is not true. The FAA is not a party to this CNR or any other. In fact, they rarely make an appearance at these meetings and avoid explaining their regulations fully if they are addressing community concerns. A CNR is basically a negotiation between an airport sponsor, in this case Jeffco, and surrounding communities. Like any negotiation, it will break down if one party acts in bad faith. This is the case here. In response, Boulder County and Superior have taken the matter to court. The airport cannot impose landing fees, curfews, or ban touch-and-go operations because the FAA would not allow it. That is also false. You have ample proof, see the council letter from Town of Superior to Jeffco, that FAA regulation for land use, community impact, environmental impact, et cetera, would allow these kinds of restrictions. Colorado's Attorney General also supports ideas like this that may require challenge of current interpretation of FAA regulations. Finally, the airport intends to dig up an old crosswind runway to support its expansion. Westminster has no control. That is also false. The runoff from this construction activity has a high probability of groundwater contamination. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has taken no action. This is an immediate threat to the health and welfare of Westminster and all others who depend on Stanley Lake as a primary water source. It is this council's responsibility to ask for an immediate halt to construction plans until a reliable environmental analysis has been conducted using reliable methodology. I look forward to working with both the council and the staff to help you gain a fuller understanding of this critical public health issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Baraya. Welcome.
Welcome. Evening, Council. I moved to Westminster 13 years ago. The first eight years was relatively quiet, just a few planes and general aviation jets. Since 2018, there's been a big increase of piston-engine planes, primarily. of piston engine planes, primarily the flight schools. Initially, people at the airport said, "If you don't like it", and the G A pilot said, "If you don't like it, move." They said this in regards to the noise that these planes were bringing up. You know, um, this affects approximately a million people in this area. Where are people to move? With family ties, house values dropping because of, uh, the crowding and the, um, uh, not, not being able to have a, uh, an environment that's, uh, capable of having people living there. I enjoy my view and my house, but I've been continually victimized by noise and lead from piston engines. So let's discuss the C N R and the I G A, the Intergovernmental Agreement that was formed four years ago by Jeffco, after noise complaints from communities and the C N R was put in place. Why? Basically, noise complaints from touch-and-gos, from piston engine planes, I get the drift, is basically flight schools. The I G A bylaws do not provide for public comments to become part of the public record. Why is this important? There's no record of comments. There's no mention of the community public comment being restricted to three minutes or thirty minutes. The C N R then discusses one and a half hours, and their meeting is adjourned without any further comment. And people have sat there throughout and then just will have to walk away. You should attend one of these meetings to see how just ineffective these meetings are. Is this our voice at the table? Bloomfield, Boulder and Lafayette said probably, and Superior is voting tonight whether to leave this C N R. Louisville had a question mark. At the last C N R meeting, Commissioner Tharp said she was baffled by the communities wanting to leave. Here are some of the reasons why. They spent fifty mil- fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money on consults to no avail, no resolutions. The cities cannot agree on the routes, primarily for flight schools. They have not made any recommendations to the FAA or the airport regarding curfews, landing fees, pushing a deadline for only selling unleaded gas, et cetera. They use the FAA as a political cover to, to continue the C N R and not ask questions or make demands. If you're not going to ask the FAA for anything, then you don't have a chance of getting results. Make them say no. There's two lawsuits currently in place by Boulder and Superior. The Superior and Boulder residents used to come to the CNRs, but they don't anymore because they got fed up and, and filed lawsuits. Three thousand of your taxpayer money is sent to the C N R to be members of the C N R. Seems pretty dumb to me. Lastly, a former airport director made comments about the C A R, C N R, tearing it down. I don't know, you don't need a, a, a C N R to get a Park One Fifty study. And in this, uh, FAA bulletin that came out, there are a number of different structures and models for roundtables which have evolved over a period of thirty years. In some cases, they may be sponsored and supported by the airport operator. In other cases, they may organize, be organized by local governments or communities themselves. A roundtable enables communities and airports to have continuing dialogue on airport noise and other further issues. I'd just like to say that make sure your C N R is serving the Westminster community or choose another path. When you are in the position of power, you have the responsibility to act. Let's make some action as part of your city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, hello, Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Dr. Robert Brown. I am the, uh, clinic director and lead chiropractor at One Hundred Percent Chiropractic in, on Eighty-Ninth Avenue, the old Westminster Mall, next to the J C Penney. Um, I just wanted to take a couple minutes and introduce myself. Um, I started at that practice about a year ago. I'm new to Denver, new to the area, um, and, uh, yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself and say, uh, how truly inspiring it is to, uh, this is my second city council, uh, meeting to see all the members of this, uh, amazing community, how passionately they speak of the, uh, issues that you're dealing with, uh, not only for immediate, uh, you know, changes, but changes in the future. So to all of you here, that is, uh, truly inspiring. Um, now, a little bit about my, uh, just, I, I'm a member of the Downtown Westminster Business Association, as Matthew, uh, stated earlier. And I just want to say how excited I am to, uh, be a m- a member of the, uh, of this business association with the goal of, uh, increasing, um, just awareness and, and energy into the area. Um, just in the year that I've been there, I've watched the growth and some new businesses kind of move in. And like, uh, Matthew again stated that we're very excited for more businesses, more growth, and, uh, have plenty of events, uh, kind of planned for, uh, you know, for the park that's coming in and, uh, just, uh, yeah, for, for the area in general. So, um, again, I just want to say thank you, introduce myself, and if there's ever anything myself or my team can do, uh, please let us know, and you are all invited to come check it out anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer. That was our last speaker.
Were you late getting here?
No, I actually signed up right after John, John, and I spoke. I'll verify that, he was right behind me.
Come on up. I thought I saw you, so I'm going, I kept waiting for your name.
All is good, everything's fine. I think you just need my name, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Tom Lampeau? All right, hello? Um, I'm here tonight to lift Westminster and the people in prayer. Before I begin, I want to say we are seeing truth being revealed and justice being served. We are living in unprecedented times, all glory to God. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father in Jesus' victorious name, we invite you here to the city of Westminster. Your presence is known by Westminster and we are your people. No one is above you, no one can come against your plans. No matter how our situations appear, no matter how we perceive outcomes, you work all things to your glory. In Ecclesiastes seven, thirteenth through fourteen, it states, "Consider the work of God. Who can make straight what he has made crooked? In the day of prosperity be joyful, and in the day of adversity consider, God has made the one as well as the other, so that man may not find out anything that will be after him. Your plans are perfect, your victory is assured, your glory reigns on. Lord, we lift up all our first responders to you. They are constantly faced with unknown situations and required to make quick decisions. In your word, you state in First Peter five, seven, "Cast all your care upon him, because he cares for you." Bless our first responders with assurance in you. Protect them as they do their work to your glory. Guide them in their decisions and actions and bring peace to them. Our world is in a great transition. The Evil One and his followers are desperate for any sign of hope. Day by day, their hope of total enslavement of your creation is slipping from them. We know that for a time their destruction will continue, but all things work for your glory and the victory is already yours. In Psalm thirty-four, seventeen through nineteen, it states, "The righteous cry out, and the Lord hears and rescues them from all their troubles. The Lord is near to be, to the brokenhearted and saves those who are crushed in spirit. The affliction of the righteous are many, but the Lord rescues him from all of them. Let these words come, comfort us. Jesus, you are alive, you live on, you have destroyed the power of our enemy, and now we want you to expose all the corruption that has come against us and stolen our joy. In your victorious name we pray." Amen. Thank you and have a nice night.
Thank you.
I, I double-checked, that is really our last speaker. Thank you, and we want to welcome Deputy City Manager Andrews for City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, I do have a brief report, uh, this evening. Uh, we'll start with the city update. Uh, the Westminster Sustainability Center is about to open, and that will be happening on Monday, April twenty-second at nine A M. And that, uh, for those of you hadn't, haven't heard yet, is a convenient, clean and safe location where residents can drop off recyclables, including hard-to-recycle items, uh, without having to go to multiple places. Uh, this is an upgrade to the city's current system, um, and we're very happy and excited to announce its opening, uh, is coming in just a few weeks. Uh, for everyone's benefit, the hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from nine A M to four P M, and Friday and Saturday from nine A M to three P M, uh, and all, and being closed on Sundays. Single stream or, uh, mixed recyclables, which most of us are used to, are free to drop off at the facility. And hard-to-recycle, uh, goods will also be accepted for a fee, and you can get the, uh, fee schedule directly from the center. Uh, please join us for a grand opening celebration, if you're able to, on Friday, April twenty-sixth. Residents are welcome and encouraged to drop in anytime from three to six P M for a tour of the center and to ask any questions and to get some information about our, uh, new facility. Next slide, please. We have one westy win that I'd like to highlight tonight for our community, and that was Shot Spot, and that's, uh, Westminster Animal Management, uh, group. Our, our staff team partnered with Spay Today on Saturday, the thirtieth, to offer affordable services for both cats and dogs, including vaccines and microchips. The number of dogs and cats vaccinated reached one hundred and fifty. The hosts also provided information to keep all our four-legged residents safe and healthy. Next slide, please. A few things to know in terms of the city's upcoming, um, calendar. Uh, canceled tomorrow night is our Planning Commission meeting, so that is not happening tomorrow night on April ninth. Our inclusivity board meeting on Wednesday, April tenth, will occur from six to seven thirty P M, and that's a hybrid meeting. You can attend in person at the City Hall City Manager's Office Conference Room or participate, uh, in, um, by the Teams link. Our youth advisory panel meeting is this Wednesday on April tenth from six to seven thirty, and that's at City Hall in our multi-purpose room downstairs. I would also like to highlight, uh, for residents, we have tree limb recycling. Uh, you can drop off tree limbs on Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight A M to noon, and that's very timely following the past few days of high winds. Um, that's, we, we refer to that as the Brow property, and that's located at one zero 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 one Al Khyra Street. And again, that's free drop-off of tree limbs on this Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight until noon. I would also like to highlight, um, also on that day, City Council has a spe- special study session, um, to go through its strategic planning exercise to have a look at the city's strategic plan and update and revise that. Um, that will happen Saturday from eight A M to four P M, and that is open to the public and will also be available, uh, on stream. So you can come in purpose to City, uh, sorry, in, in, um, person to City Hall in our multi-purpose room, or you can participate and watch, uh, through our, uh, streaming. And finally, City Council's study session this coming Monday, April fifteenth, will occur here, uh, in the boardroom adjacent to this room at six thirty P M. Next slide, please, Abby. Tonight in the packet are three information-only items, uh, draw to your attention. Item, uh, one, which is titled A, Twenty Twenty-three Water Conservation and Efficiency Programs Update. We have a second item B, Twenty Twenty-three Water Bill Assistance Programs Update, and item C, which is the Lexington Homeowners Association Request for the city to take ownership of private trail segments within the subdivision. And I would note, uh, we did have a speaker on item C tonight, and, uh, staff will be following up on what you've raised, uh, with respect to accuracies in that memo. Next slide, please. Uh, as always, I would reiterate, uh, for the City Manager's Office, you can reach us anytime this week. If you'd like to reach us, uh, you can do so, uh, by calling me directly, three zero three six five eight two thousand and three, or my email address, jandrews@westminsterco.gov. And of course, follow us on any one of our four, uh, social media, um, platforms, um, Facebook, um, Twitter, um, X, and, uh, Nextdoor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, comments? Come, or Mayor Potem?
Just on item C of the staff reports for Lexington Trails, just, um, as one of the questions that sort of came up from the public commenter, um, the numbers that we were provided, is there a, um, a smaller footprint that we could take over, um, and then be able to evaluate that dollar amount? So that would just be something to answer later.
Mayor Potem, Mayor, thank you, we will follow up on that and make sure that we include that, uh, that question as well. Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, that brings us to City Council comments. Anyone? Um, I just want to remind, um, speakers, thanks for everybody that came out. Uh, but if there's things to be followed up on, um, staff will be doing that, especially, um, the drug stuff. I hope that we take that seriously and, um, hear what people have to say. And there was something else I... Oh, the, for the tennis court and the lighted courts, um, can those be put on citizen budget requests for when we go looking at budget? Those two things don't get lost? Counselor Zadi.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to start off with a big thank you to all the residents who continue to come to these city council meetings. Um, and you've spent hundreds of hours, so particularly the Who's Cat folks and the C N R folks and, um, the volunteers who volunteer their time. Uh, it takes a lot of time, and sometimes it, it may seem like we don't pay attention, but we do. And we see and we appreciate, um, all the time that you take to research and educate and make and bring up the awareness and, and get your voice heard. So I wanted to just start with that. Um, thank you, Andrew, for your thorough, detailed update from the, um, Guardians. I'm, so I'm excited to hear the Guardians take on the next CAT meeting, you said it's tomorrow, particularly around the parking solutions. I'm excited to hear all the various ideas that come from that, but those updates are very helpful. And to the C N R folks, um, your updates, the hours, the hundreds of hours that you have spent on researching, it's, I don't know how to give my gratitude, but it's, it's very helpful, and I want you to know it's not all waste, right? Um, we had a great update tonight from our liaison on the meeting last Thursday, uh, but it's nothing that you guys haven't said already, right? So it's, I'm, I'm just very grateful that you're spending all this time because it is important for our community health. And regarding the drug dealing in Highland Hills, I would also like to know, maybe if we can get updates, um, Deputy City Manager, ongoing, just update us as to what the developments are and what we're doing differently to help with that neighborhood. I think that's very important. And the Lexington, so the memo, I agree, Sharon, that the memo was very, was strangely one-sided. And I've talked about this before, where I think we need to start making sure that what we put out, so when we have recommendations to council, when we have memos like this, we need to have two-sided. Show both sides. Don't just justify the argument, the, the recommendation. What I like to see is both sides. Um, show the pros and cons, because I think this memo was strangely, you know, I think it was unintentional, but it was unintentionally biased against it, and I think that just preamps council's thinking. So I would like more balanced, uh, memos on that topic and many topics. And regarding tennis, I totally agree with the tennis folks and the little kid that gave his plea. I, I, I've been talking with a lot of folks in, in the neighborhood, in the city, and we have a lot of gaps, right, um, from a recreation standpoint. And I think it rolls up into a higher-order strategic priority that I'd like to talk about with council this Saturday at our Strategic Planning Retreat, and that priority is around this concept of holistic community health and wellness. Uh, we have a lot of issues in the city that are kind of linked together and interconnected, right? So from a mental health, physical health, environmental health, um, substance abuse support, there, there are a lot of gaps that we could be doing a much better job at. And I think this concept of community health and wellness really reflects this comprehensive approach that we can take to enhance the wellness of all community members. And tennis is one of those specific i- ideas. Um, that's not just, I mean, you've heard, you heard the stats tonight, that's all true. There are thousands, literally thousands of residents who play, not just in those clubs, but amateurs like me who get beat all the time. but amateurs like me who get beat all the time, would take part in this, and this is a real opportunity for building community, building neighborhoods again, right? There are a lot of revenue impacts, huge ones, that you heard already, but the other side of it is there are these personal development, these community-building benefits, value adds to the community, that I think is missing. And from a recreation standpoint, we have a lot of age groups that don't have much to do in the city today, and they would like more, and one of those that I'm hearing very loudly is tennis. So I'd be interested to learn more about that. Colorado is number one in tennis growth, and from a USTA standpoint, I think Councilor Nermal may know more on that, but the UST, they have these events, and they are big cash cows, and if we're looking to figure out how to raise more revenue in the city, having a tennis center, besides all the benefits that I already laid out, just from a revenue standpoint, it can bring thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of dollars from each event, and that could be, that money then could be used to serve all these other gaps that we know we have in the city. So I'm a huge proponent of that, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Mayor Protem?
I also wanted to recognize all of the volunteers and community members and business owners that have come to speak tonight and who continue to just serve our community. There's nothing like hearing what everybody was doing when they were going through and introducing themselves. It's such a diverse array of ways to participate and lead and serve our community, and I would just encourage more folks to, you know, put your, put a little bit of time in, because there's so many different ways that you can take your passion and direct it towards your community. So thank you. And of course, one of my passions is tennis, so all the tennis people, I hear you. I actually felt very lonely when I moved to Westminster. I felt like there are no tennis players in Colorado. I was shocked to hear that we are a growing slash maybe one of the more active states. I wouldn't believe it, based on our tennis courts. I know, I'm very opinionated about our tennis courts. I've been that way even when I worked here. And I would definitely love to see the requests go on, the budget request, and would love to just better understand how you might be able to deliver better tennis service. I keep seeing pickleball courts go up in place of tennis courts, and it's very sad to me. Sorry for all the pickleball players, but devout tennis player. And I'm also breeding three more, so yeah, got some more coming down the line. For the Who's Cat, which I really love because it's about dogs, so the MMA individual who is spreading awareness actually somehow got to my brother who lives in Missouri and who called me up and said, "What's going on with the open space area?" So nothing like getting that from many ends. I'm glad that everybody is participating, and I would just encourage staff, you know, we have four meetings that are scheduled, and I just want to make sure that we are giving ourselves enough time to get to buy-in and consensus. So if we need to add another meeting, can we be flexible about that and just kind of get to where we need to be? I would love to understand how the Guardians group can generate some potential, both volunteer and maybe other revenue sources and partnerships, so that we aren't doing this alone and feel like we have to shoulder it. I think there's a broad community support and willingness to help us maintain this. With the RMMA, sorry, I said that too fast, the RMMA with the airport, like Councilor Zadi, I do appreciate that we do have such expertise and continued willingness to educate us and, you know, and come here and give us information, but also ask for more. And I would just hope that with the study session that we have upcoming, that we do review the comments that we've received today, both in email and in public study or public session, and just make sure that we're gathering the questions, because I want to be able to have our study session, just have this body be able to answer the questions that are coming to us. You know, some of those are around just the, you know, the utility of the CNR versus other options we have, but also what other options do we have to address some of the environmental concerns in terms of studies and things like that that we can move forward And Highland Hills, the neighborhood's experiences, I would definitely be interested in hearing how, when we research into that, how we can help there. I think that was mainly it.
Yeah. And I just want to clarify, the Who's Cat does have one to two meetings sitting out there if needed. Councilor Demont?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank everybody who came out tonight, specifically the volunteers. And so, I mean, almost a million dollars' worth of benefit to the city from the volunteers. It's pretty impressive, and that was just a small group of the volunteers that I know that we have in the city, and you heard kind of across the gamut tonight from people who volunteer with the fire, police, in our parks and rec, snowbusters. There's just so many great ways to volunteer, and it just shows you what kind of community you live in, that we have that many people who take their free time to benefit the community and the others in it. So personal thank you for me. I wanted to point out and thank staff as well. Today was the pothole of Palooza, and so I know that they were out working, because I got stuck behind a couple of them today. It seemed like every time I went out. So evidently, my area town has a lot of potholes, or somebody who reported them, and no, it wasn't me. But thank you to staff, so if you would pass that along for me. I thought that was pretty cool to actually see that in action, once I kept running into them today. On the stuff with the drug use, I want to be a little bit more specific with my ask. The speakers had talked about some laws that changed, and I don't know specifically which ones there are. I know there have been different things in the state that have made it challenging for them to do their work. So I would ask you to dig into that and make sure that there's some validity to whatever was being used as a reason for not being able to take action. And like we have done in other areas, I would ask if there are tools that we could do as a municipality in order to allow the police to do the work of keeping our community safe. I'd ask us to think outside of the box and see if there truly is a gap behind being able to take action, what that is and how we could address it, because it certainly isn't, unfortunately, the first time I've heard of this kind of situation, but this sounds like it's been going on for a while in this particular instance, so that would be my ask. Dog park people, I did get to sit down with one of your members on last week for coffee. I have to say that, you know, I appreciate the passion that you guys are bringing and solutions you're looking for. I too have heard from people outside of your group. I have a friend who is a childhood friend who lives in eastern Brighton, and he called me twice, like, "What's going on with the dog park, man?" I come out there, and so it just goes to show, you know, how popular that amenity is to the region. So I appreciate your work on that and that we're looking for solutions. Lastly, CNR folks, thank you for coming out. I will say, I would like from staff as we go into that study session, and I don't know if it's possible, but it would be interesting to hear some of the challenges on votes over time. We've heard a lot about bad faith. I tell you, one of the things that I didn't mention in the pre-meeting that I think there was feeling across some of the members, and I would put myself in that category, that some of the other members who were seeming to want to terminate it are the same ones who voted against us being able to take recommendations from the consultant to the FAA. If you think in terms of bad faith, to me, when we put 60,000, near $60,000 worth of effort into something, having one member say no, and my understanding is Boulder County has been in that seat with other representatives over the tenure of the CNR. So if nothing else, if we look to the future, whether, I don't know what the future of the CNR is, but it certainly would behoove us to understand some of the pitfalls if we look at options and how we get to talk to the FAA, you know, what the future is and where the CNR may have went wrong and how we can try to avoid those with our partners. Because I think at the end of the day, I think if people step back from their differing opinions, we all really are trying to make progress and better the community. At least, I hope that's what we're all trying to do, because that's certainly my role in that effort. So the last thing I'd mention is I usually do my policy in Pilsner on the third Thursday of every month at Copecelli at 6:30. This month, I think we probably are going to move it to the 25th, but I will share that in time that if you do attend that, that you would be able to know whether or not you should show up that night or the week after. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else, so that brings us to Consent Agenda Item A, Councilor's bill number eight. Councilor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 8A.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Item 8A. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Nermal?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote.
That brings us to a public hearing in consideration of an official development plan for Uplands filing three.
I'm sorry, Mayor, there's an appointment.
Oh, sorry. There's a resolution number seven. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number seven, appointing alternate members to the Environmental Advisory Board, Historic Landmark Board, and Planning Commission, and appointing regular members to the Election Commission and Historic Landmark Board as applicable.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number seven. Is there any further discussion?
No discussion, just to thank you to those folks that are stepping into these roles, because we really do depend on the folks that serve on these boards and commissions for us.
And we didn't have enough people sign up and apply, so we still have seats available, and it's an ongoing process at this point in time, because we haven't filled seats. So if you're so moved to want to serve, please get your -- the application, I couldn't, that word just wasn't there tonight, application in, and it will go to the city clerk, and you can find it on the website. Okay, anything else? Roll call, please. Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermal?
Yes.
And Counselor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote.
Now that brings us to a public hearing in consideration of an official development plan for Uplands filing three, Block 2 PAC 2, located east of the intersection of Clay Street and West 87th Place. Goodness.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Councilors, John McConnell, interim planning manager here to provide you with the staff's introduction and presentation. Next slide, please. Staff Agenda Memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The Agenda Memo is associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the public notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 1,052 property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. Eight public notification signs were posted on the subject property, and the city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Next slide, please. The overlook at the Uplands site is shown here in pink. The project site is located east of the intersection of Clay Street and West 87th Place. The boundary in red is the overall 30-acre ODP, of which 9.72 acres would be developed under this proposal. The remainder of the site would have infrastructure, street, and sidewalk improvements approved as part of this ODP. Outlot A, identified in green, shows the location of a future public park that accounts for a portion of the required PLD for the overall Uplands development. Next slide, please. The ODP aligns the allowed uses with the current 2040 comprehensive plan designation of suburban multifamily with 247 units allowed and approved under the Uplands PDP. These units are spread over seven three-story buildings centered around an amenity area with a clubhouse. Vehicular access would be from two entrances off Clay Street and a wide multi-use trails about the north and west sides of the site. A large detention facility is located in the northeast corner of the site and would provide stormwater management for the entire 30-acre site. Next slide, please. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in more detail in the Agenda Memo. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that City Council hold a public hearing and approve the ODP. Next slide, please. Planning Commission reviewed this application on February 27th of this year and voted unanimously in favor of recommendation for approval by a vote of 7 to 0. Next slide, please. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priority of shared sense of community through the creation of new affordable housing that will allow for diversity of residents to make Westminster their home. The application would also meet the plan priority of quality of life by facilitating the construction of new housing that offers residents access to park space, multi-use trails, and other amenities. The applicant's with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Both applicant, team, and the staff will be here to answer your questions.
Thank you, John.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilors, certainly appreciate this opportunity to present to you. I am Marcus Pockner. I'm a consultant to Uplands and to St. Charlestown Company, and honored tonight to present to you. Next slide. I do want to say, we actually believe this is a momentous occasion. We are here to talk about the first fully affordable proposed development in Uplands. We think that is a wonderful addition here to talk about the full spectrum of housing and to provide diversity of housing and talk about the affordable housing development. As you see here, I'm joined by the founder and a number of principals from St. Charlestown Company, our architects and planners are here as well. We will have a full team available to answer any questions that you may have. I'll turn it over here first to Charlie Woolley, who is the founder, a great visionary developer, to tell a little bit about St. Charlestown Company, and then I'll come back and give the balance of our presentation. Charlie?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm Charlie Woolley. I am one of the founders of the St. Charlestown Company, and we're very proud to be here in Westminster, presenting to you tonight a exceptional affordable housing development, the overlook at Uplands. We have many partners, and as Marcus said, I have three of my partners here in the corner with me tonight, and will be able to answer any questions I think you have about our project. Our company was started 31 years ago with an affordable development in a historic warehouse in downtown Denver. It was a loft-style conversion of a manufacturing warehouse with 27 units of for-sale housing, and this is how we started our business. The actual sales were to a policewoman, firefighter, professional photographers, and Denver schoolteachers, the very population that struggles today to find affordable housing in Westminster. The overlook at Uplands is one answer, and like all of our buildings, we think it will feature vernacular architecture that is, that's unique to Westminster, will have quality finishes, will have onsite, great onsite amenities, and we have an ideal apartment location with access to open space, parks, shopping, and schools. This is truly an exceptional development within an exceptional master plan community. We thank you for consideration tonight for another landmark project that we're very pleased to bring to Westminster. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we go to the next slide here, you'll actually see a number of the images of Lytec housing that have been developed by St. Charles, so we wanted to provide some precedent or some indicative illustratives of other projects and really see the great architecture that's involved in this. Next slide. Just as an agenda, what we're going to cover, I'll give a very brief Uplands update and then -- a very brief Uplands update and then transition to the site plan to focus a lot on some of the details that John covered. We'll talk about the architectural diversity and then really focus on the amenities and some of the exceptions that are involved in the site plan as well. Next slide. This is the site. I think everybody understands it very well from the map that was shown earlier. What is so interesting about this site is it's not connected to city fabric today. It is actually very hard to get to. You have to walk to the site except for the one roadway on Clay Street. Eighty-eighth does not continue down to this site, so it's not really part of the fabric. This is a site that you can walk to today, but a very important site that actually has remarkable opportunities to connect to open space around it. Next slide. Just this abbreviated Uplands update, if we transition just as a kind of showing for the public to the next slide here, there are now three different neighborhoods that have been approved with A4 being approved a few weeks ago. So that is now updated. So three different site plans, neighborhoods, and now focused tonight on C2, parcel C2, the very northeast corner. This shows that these proposed neighborhoods now bring forward affordable housing, very different diversity of housing typology, and then all the parks and open space that are involved. This does allow people to see that we are focused on all the different parcels in Uplands and trying to bring different parts of the site together as we develop the surrounding infrastructure. Next slide. This is something that we're very proud of and certainly want to continue to focus on, the open space, the public land dedication on the site overall, just over 34 acres. And then when you put in the view corridors, we're at 40-plus acres. It does come to rest near this site, the C2 neighborhood that we're focused on. As you see on the east side of Federal, there, there's a three-acre site that will be dedicated for PLD. It actually has a really important because it links together along Eighty-eighth. It's the first trail connection, and then we'll make that trail connection to Camanish Park and really open up all the way to Highland Hills. So we actually think that's a great amenity that will transition. I will point out that that is just to the north of the existing Prospector Point condos, and what a great amenity to add to them, a park to an existing building that's there today. Next slide. This is something we always focus on as well, the bike and pedestrian connectivity for all of the surrounding site. I just want to kind of focus again right there at Eighty-eighth and Federal at that kind of northeast corner, so people understand the overall infrastructure that's coming in from Uplands and how it relates to parcel C2 as you see it moving to the east. Right at the intersection, you see the purple dash there. We're improving that entire intersection, the Eagles intersection, if you want to think about it that way, putting a crosswalk on the north side. We are actually lowering the intersection, the connection on the west side of Eighty-eighth there to actually more align that, to make that a much safer intersection. So there's new signal eyes coming in. And then as you move east, there's a 10-foot concrete multi-use trail that goes all the way to our site. Past the site, there is very substantial grade. That's why the roadway doesn't continue. So you see that there's a connection of an off-site trail connection down to Zuni, to all the park facilities, and then we're also adding a striped bike lane along Eighty-eighth. So again, creating an entire infrastructure that's not on Eighty-eighth today to link these and the adjoining properties to the rest of the city. Next slide. We'll focus now on this specific neighborhood, the site plan overview. If we transition then thinking about this, and I'll flashback a couple of times to the surrounding streets because people really don't know this site as well since we aren't able to really drive by it today. But this shows the seven different buildings that we are developing. Overall, there are 247 units. Almost 70% of the units are two- or three-bedroom. So really focused on larger units here. We meet, and of course, the parking requirements, providing that amenity zone for all the residents, and then also providing that regional stormwater detention. So really important amenities, and then I'll talk a lot about the open space that we're connecting to, to the north. We think this site plan, as we transition again, really fits into this. This is today's site, and unless you drive it or walk that site, you realize that it just is not connected to Greenbrier, the mobile home community to the east. There's no roadway there from Eighty-eighth. You have to come up from Zuni. It's also just kind of from Clay Street. It's hard. It does not extend all the way to Eighty-eighth, so people come out at the Crown Point intersection. So really adding a full network of transportation options to the existing community and really making this a full community on the east side of Federal. Next slide. This shows you what I was just showing. That's the existing roadways. They're in yellow, and then the new roadways that come into this site. So it allows it to expand from Eighty-eighth. You see Eighty-seventh coming in, and you see what we're calling a trailhead, the turnaround zone there, that actually will effectively function as that. It provides access, driving access to our site, but it also will serve as a trailhead to connect to the remarkable amenities and park in Highland Hills Recreation. So we truly will be creating and allowing people to have access to that in that turnaround area. We're working with the city to develop some parking and other things, so to really make that an amenity for the surrounding area as well. Next slide. This shows just from a land use perspective. We are fully compliant with the PDP on this site. It does allow multifamily on the site. That's the only use being proposed here. We will have onsite management, and our permit parking system will be utilized or is typically utilized on this site. So I just want to focus again, this is a land use that was projected and called for and really matches the surrounding context of the area. Next slide. As we transition, we always look at this compliance chart. What did we bring to you in the PDP? It showed a maximum number of 247 units, which we are developing. We are obviously on the higher end of that growth density, which I believe we should be when we're talking about affordable units. We're bringing in the affordable housing units, fully affordable on this site. We are providing more publicly accessible private parks than was prescribed. I also just want to call out the setback along Clay Street. Different than the PDP, I'm going to talk about why that, we're making that as an exception, and actually from the leadership from the city, some great feedback from them about how to make Clay Street a much better street. Also notice really a step down on the building height, staying at three stories, only at 41 feet. Next slide. This just does show you, if you could take one image from this presentation and just think about what we're providing here. Again, almost 70% of the units are two- or three-bedroom units in this development. The area meeting income that we are serving with the affordable housing is 40 to 70%. So if you take those income categories there, the max of the AMI, and then correspond back to the side there of an occupational chart, you see who we are serving with these units. You see people like Protective Services, healthcare practitioners, life and physical, social sciences. All of those occupational groups are who we hope to serve. And then finally, we are doing it in a way that we should. We are providing all the site and amenities that people deserve and should live in. So you look at really an expansive list of amenities and site benefits into this neighborhood. Next slide. A couple other things, just again to remind, I wanted to be sure and show one of this. We're putting some fencing along our detention basin. That has remarkable grade change moving there to the northeast. So we're putting in some fencing there in red. We wanted to be sure and show that as a way of providing, and again, that is, as John mentioned, providing detention and water quality for the entirety of parcel C, not just this site. Next slide. Couple things here on architectural diversity as we transition to this. I certainly won't do it justice, but this is actually, if you were in our clubhouse, our amenity zoning, looking east at the crescent-shaped building, you start to see some of the architecture that we have on this site. We're really trying to break up both the horizontal massing there. We're using Dutch gables, some setbacks really to look at that. That building actually transitions to two-story at the southern end of that building. And then on the vertical plane, you'll see balconies, windows, the way we're really trying to articulate some of the architecture details, but really trying to make this live like a great Colorado property in more of kind of a contemporary farmhouse look. Next slide, please. This is actually the southern entrance along Clay Street. One thing you should notice in the foreground there, that is that 10-foot multi-use trail. So opposite from the new park, there will be a 10-foot trail that goes all the way to the north to the Eighty-eighth that then will connect to another 10-foot trail and then go to Camanish Park in Highland Hills. So really creating this amazing amenity and recreation zone so people can have that use as they move up and down in that new neighborhood. Next slide. This is internal to the site. We have a mix of parking typologies here. Here on this building, you see some tuck-under parking that's evolved, and then obviously surface parking. So you see some images of the tuck-under garages there. And again, that really ample setback along Clay Street, really providing for the right transitions to the open space. Our last slide on the next one shows, again, looking back and through these two greenways that we were able to provide, again, affordable housing to have these great amenities, and then looking out at the new PLD to the west. So again, really trying to create great spaces for families to live here in Westminster. Next slide. Neighborhood amenities, just to go around the site, a few details. If we go to this just at the top, again, at Eighty-eighth, if you're top of the clock here, that's the 10-foot internal trail going up to Eighty-eighth and off to Highland Hills. As you go around it, you start to see the amenity zone, right? The sports court, the workout facility, a pool, a lot of different stations for barbecue grills, ways to hang out with the family throughout the site. And then you see on 5A there, again, the 10-foot trail that connects up and the two greenways that connect over to the park. So we think a very highly amenitized area. We do not allow barbecue grills on the balconies because that's a code and should be that way. So really providing a lot of those amenities throughout the site as well. Next slide. A few things I want to cover for sure on exceptions. We all talk about the PUD, the intent to reflect maximum design, a freedom here, but more than importantly, we want to show those to you. We have eight exceptions that we are requesting for this affordable housing project. The next slide shows these eight exceptions. This is actually a picture of the PDP just sharing how we list those. So these are the exceptions that we put in there. I'll detail it here on the next slide. These are pretty straightforward exceptions, but we're happy to answer any questions. I'll just start with the first one there. Our retaining wall is over six feet, which is an exception because of the topography on that detention wall. It's a safety element as well. We wanted to do that to not absorb too much of the site, so we are bringing in the six-foot retaining walls. I'm going to talk about the second item there that setbacks along Clay Street in just a moment. The entrance mediums, we have some, or medians, we have a conflict there with the water main coming in, so we're using enhanced landscaping to celebrate that entry instead of it being in a median. Our garage sizing, we are changing the width, a reduction of 13 inches below standard, which is actually now much more of a norm that goes about it in a typical market rate and/or affordable. So we're just making a very slight exception on the garage sizing. The balcony sizes are being reduced, but something I want to point out is it's only required to have balconies on 50% of the units. We are reducing them so we can have them on 100% of the units. So again, a very beneficial change to the residents. The building heights, we're only using 65% of the available heights and using a lot of different architectural techniques to really absorb and reflect the surrounding height and density of us around, or the properties around us. Again, on Eighty-eighth, there's a water main that happens to run right there, so our trees are going to be just south of the tree lawn. So working with staff on ways to enhance the landscaping where we have utility conflicts. This next slide, which I believe is almost our last one, just shows you something that we really focused on a lot along on Clay Street. We wanted to provide some architectural changes and really some articulation of the line along the street. Staff suggested, and you can see there, 2B and 3D are a little more forward on Clay Street to actually engage the street a little better. It allows for a better connection to the park as well. And you see it results in some different right-of-ways. The other thing we did there is also add another five feet to the sidewalk to have that multi-use trail. So again, we think a much more active street, a much more engaged street, and that's one of the exceptions that we are asking for as well. Next slide, please. This shows it in building form. You can kind of see with the north being to the left there in the Clay Street, you can see the two buildings that are a little closer along Clay Street. Next slide. Standards of approval, as we transition to those, we certainly come back always to what we brought to you in the PDP. We believe we are fully compliant with the guidance that we had, bringing forward a multifamily affordable housing development well within the norms that we established. And finally, as we transition to the list of approval criteria, we believe, and staff did a great job, we believe we meet all of these requirements, exceed them, and very happy to bring forward what we believe is a very complete affordable housing neighborhood. Next slide. I will close that out from here. I tried to work through that diligently. We have a whole team available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Mayor Protem.
Well, number one, I'm really excited over the type of units that, in the AMI levels, that this project will meet. So 40 to 70% is, I was just commenting, that's what we regionally and citywide need, so I'm happy there. I just have some questions, in no order, because I just splattered them on here. Is that giant crescent building that is, it is pretty massive in terms, and it's right next to a residential manufactured home park, and the scale's pretty different. I don't know if there's any way to break up that building or the scale of it. You mentioned that it's hitting two stories at the very southern edge, but I feel like, I don't know if there's, we have no, do we not have a maximum building length? Because this is like the longest building I've seen known to man outside of Denver.
So Counselor, I'll defer to the rest of our team. One thing I will note about that, that crescent-shaped building, if you look at that there, just to put it in perspective, the landscaping to the east of that is a 35-foot buffer, and then the parking area there is another 100 feet. So there's 135-feet buffer to the mobile home community. It also doesn't necessarily show it, but there is a tremendous change in grade.
Yeah, I was going to ask which way.
Right. So it's actually to the northeast as the detention goes there. So you wouldn't see, for instance, a perimeter fence on our site, right? It transitions quite a ways back. So I think you are correct. We tried to provide that step down there to the two-story building, but it allowed us to get some density in. So those are some initial thoughts, and I'll turn to Jordan or others. I think, I will just say, certainly trying to get as much, to get as many units as we can and also meet the parking. That site is laid out that way, right? That's the odd shape of that, and we really tried to be creative to kind of create that crescent-sized or shaped building.
Okay, the, actually, can you go back to the site plan? Because it helps me, the, with respect to the six-foot retaining wall.
Sure.
I'm surprised to see that. I know it's pretty deep. And so the fence, I'm interested in the quality of that fence because that'll be a definite visual impact.
You bet.
Which you don't show on the images.
Good evening, councilors. The fence will sort of look like a anodized black aluminum bolt-together fence. So if you've ever, like, imagined a wrought iron fence, it's made of aluminum painted black instead of wrought iron. And that will go along the western edge of the pond and the southern edge of the pond. Those are the only two edges that have retaining walls. The north end of the pond and the east end of the pond are sloped with turf landscaping.
Okay, I just want to emphasize the need for a good quality fence there. The, since I'm looking at this, another thing with respect to the internal circulation, I think it would be helpful if there are certain areas where you're kind of striping out where you want people to be walking through. I mean, the sidewalks through the development are right on the edge of where people will be driving through or right along parking. And getting to the little islanded clubhouse, it'd be good if you can have some crosswalks just for internal safety.
I would have to defer to our civil engineer, but the city does have provisions for enhanced crosswalks. I don't know if they apply at private drives. It's something we can certainly look at, at least for crossings. That would just be, you know, painted striping, which is very easy to do.
It's better than nothing, I would say, just because we don't have it on private. This is a very busy, dense development. I don't know. Mr. McConnell might have a...
Yes, I'd refer you to page 25 of the ODP, and you'll see a little bit more detail on the pedestrian crossings. There's a substantial amount of them, and we did work with the applicant to make sure that they were in places that made a lot of sense in connecting the pedestrians across the site and through the site.
Okay, okay. So it's just not showing as well on this image?
Not on this image.
Okay.
It's showing right here, but page 25 on the ODP.
In the packet, in the presentation, page 25, if you have that available. If not, I can, I can bring it up and show you if you'd like.
That's, that's okay. I can look at it again. I just didn't, you know, it didn't register with me as much as it does on this image. Okay. Another question I have about this project is, there's a lot of surface parking, and I do worry about just hail... do worry about just hail potential and the lack of carports here. And I thought we did require carports for certain... And so when I'm thinking about this, in the AMI levels, those, you know, the people that are going to be living here, it's very difficult for them to replace a car when it gets totaled. So they're a little more impacted. And so, yeah, I'd be curious to know.
The applicant can probably point it, point this out in more detail, but the city does require one-third of the parking to be covered or in garages. And there is tuck-under parking on several of the buildings, and there should be garage parking and on other spaces to meet that one-third.
Okay. I'll just encourage carports.
Specifically, of the 381 spaces, we have 200, excuse me, 254 surface spaces, 75 garages, and then an additional 52 covered spaces. And the current plan is to have those be covered carports with solar on top of them.
Okay, so you're at least going to meet the one-third.
What's that?
You're at least meeting the one-third.
Yes, we are.
Covered requirement. Okay, I'll still leave it that if you could add more, that would be wonderful. I was a little concerned over the setback intrusion for those buildings 2B and 3D, but since it's next to the park area, I think that that's less impactful to the neighboring residents. And I think I read correctly, the building separation is 40 feet or more, 40 between those parallel buildings?
Dan, do you have those? Do you want to bring those specifically up?
Sorry, I'm the quality of life police.
Dan Katz with Cage Civil Engineering. Yeah, 40 feet is correct. That's the minimum between the buildings that are running parallel.
Okay. Thank you for making them livable. Okay, those were, those are my questions. Thank you.
Councillor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a comment that, you know, the occupational wages chart, that slide, can you go to that slide? I just think it's a fantastic visual of how important this is. You know, we have 3,016 affordable housing units in Westminster. This is 247. Can you go to that slide, please? Whoever's that slide? This is 247.
Slide number 17, please.
And I think you have 80 more, right? Is that correct?
At least, yes.
That's not included, that we haven't seen yet.
That's correct.
Taking a look at this chart, it's just, it's one of the best slides I've seen. I just wanted to give you some props there for creating this because it shows who is being served, and it's a large chunk of Westminster residents, and we know it's only getting, that the cost of living in the city is only getting worse. So thank you. I think this is great.
Thank you.
Councillor DeMott?
Thank you for the presentation. Think, I don't have specific questions about the development, but I do have a question about, this is something that's come up multiple times in your presentations, about the, you know, lack of a grocery store there. And I know that in the past, you guys have brought up that you were working with potential tenants for what used to be, I think, the Safeway. So I'm just curious with this coming online, if there's any more movement in that vein.
Yeah, councillor, I can share, I think that we continue to actually get more interest, I think, over the last number of months from grocers. You are right, thinking of the former grocery store there, the site just to the south of us, Summit Square, I believe, is what it's called. I think they're continuing to get a lot of interest. We're getting calls about, you know, even our own site and other opportunities. So I would say, you know that area so well, but it's interesting to see that true infill happen there, and people really want to see that. So yes, we are seeing increased demand. It's certainly nothing that's done yet, but we are getting very solid feedback on that.
Great. I was just asked that we don't take our foot off the gas on that, and I know that, you know, the demand will probably help that, but I just don't want it to be lost because it's certainly something the area would benefit from.
Terrific.
Anything else? I too am excited to see this part come to life, and thank you for, city, it sounds like you have been working tirelessly to make things work and know where the water is so you can't build a tree there or plant a tree there. It's just good to hear everybody's working for the good, and so thank you to both of you. I see no more questions. Do we have, anybody signed up to speak? We have one person signed up to speak, John Palmer. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I have lots of concerns and questions about this development. Some of them were brought forth at the planning commission, and answers were given, and I will repeat those to you. First off, I didn't hear them say if this is part of the metro district or not, so that would be good to know. Who's, who's paying for this? Because they're asking for economic development money also in your study session or in your executive session this evening. Next, let's talk about safety, the crime, particularly at their other development, St. Mark's Village up on Federal behind the Wishbone. That's B30. Ask any of the officers, I'm sure you can ask one of the sergeants-at-arms about B30 and the problems they have up there at St. Mark's Village. To that, I say, they need to have onsite 24/7 security. Now, in the planning commission, they said, well, we'll have it as needed. As needed doesn't help. It's a burden to our police department, it's a burden to our taxpayers to have all these calls up at St. Mark's, and we're just going to have the same thing at this development. So I think you need to demand that that be in place. Also, the parking, 1.5 basically is what they're asking for. Please note that there's none for the building 3D with tuck-under garages. There's no place close to park to 3D. So anybody in that building that's either handicapped, needs special assistance, elderly, there's going to be impossible for them to get to their building with food, groceries. So that needs to be looked at. They talked about the garages. Well, they're undersized. They're asking them to be 11-foot wide. Now, I know how wide normal garages are, and 11-foot, you're going to be banging your doors on the side of the garage. That's uncalled for. They also, in the planning commission, said that they would force the residents to park in the garages. I've never heard of such ludicrous, that you can be forced to park in your garage or be evicted. So I think you need to look into that. Secondly, or not secondly, next, they're wanting a swimming pool, they're wanting splashpads, they're wanting hot tubs. I thought we were in a water shortage. I don't recall any other developments recently that have had any of these other approvals, up to and including St. Mark's Village, where those were denied. I don't hear them talking about the trash housing area, possible bike storage areas or pet areas. I think that's something that we need to have you explore also. They keep talking about this park across the street. How many years is that out? Three, four, 10? We know better. They keep on talking about this connection to Camanish Park. That's not even in our city, so why is that a factor? Why are they pushing that? That's federal heights. Next, and again, this was brought up at the public here, or at the planning commission. I asked, where will these students be going to school? Well, turns out, part of the development will go to the Westminster School District, and the other part of the development goes to Adams 12th District. Now, I know Westminster was given cash in lieu of any facilities for their students. Have they done the same for the other school district, where they're going to be sending students or burdening that tax base of that district? I don't think so. I haven't heard anything about it. So I think we need a little more clarity on that. They keep talking about this light at 86th and Federal. CDOT hasn't signed off on it. I don't believe they have any intentions in the immediate future of signing off on that, but yet we keep pushing that as something that's going to be a good thing. They haven't talked about how much rents will be. They talked about what the AMI is, but they haven't actually given you a figure of the low end and the high end of what rents would be, because these are for rental homes, not for owned. I also worry about the traffic input, excuse me, the traffic on 84th that this will be impacting, as well as federal. I don't think that's been thought out, especially since, we all know there's a problem already up there, and if they're talking getting out of Clay onto 84th Avenue, there's going to be people trying to make left-ins and left-outs, or multiple lanes of traffic on 84th. Unsafe, unsafe. They talk about a detention pond in this property. Is it a detention pond or detention lake like they've already got over on the A parcel? Because it's not a pond, it's a lake. We've got ducks over there inhabiting the detention area on parcel A, so...
And Mr. Palmer, your time is up.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to answer any of those? Does anybody want to answer any of those?
Sure, Mayor. I'm happy to address some, and I think Jordan will as well. I just want to address a couple of things. You all saw the site plan and know the infrastructure. We are building infrastructure to this site. This is actually going to spread traffic out. It actually takes it off of the impact of 86th and Federal. I want to remind everybody that our conditions are set on approval of the surrounding infrastructure plans. We can't move forward until those are approved and those are in place. So I just want to talk about, we're actually providing more outlets for transportation, breaking up that transportation or traffic mass, and providing the same way pedestrian connections to this site. I will say that I think residents that live in affordable housing deserve amenities as well. There is nothing we don't feel badly at all. One thing St. Mark's is known for, St. Charles Company is known for, really trying to provide those amenities, to bring those in. We're very proud of that. We will certainly have things like bike storage and all of those. I will say, from a garage width standpoint, that's an interior width of garage, we are reducing them from 12-foot wide to 10-foot 11, so a reduction of 13 units. That is actually now market rate standard for garage widths. It is, every foot matters, to be honest, in these, and that is a cost in the way it fits in the building. Mr. Palmer noted 3D there. We worked through a very detailed parking plan. As you see, buildings 2B, 3D, and 4C there have shared greenways. They have great opportunities, and we've talked a lot about how those are accessible. Yes, there's not tuck-under parking there, but there are great opportunities, and there are other amenities, that connection to the park, the greenways, and some of those units there. So we believe we're really trying to address and provide for those communities. I do want to say, and I'll address this, the idea of crime at this site. We are providing affordable housing and incredible amount of stability to a lot of people in this future development. This brings stability. Mr. Willie Charlie and I were talking about that earlier today, about how affordable housing brings stability to so many people. We will embrace that. We have onsite, we have onsite security, we work with authorities. Yes, just like in any neighborhood, there can be issues, but that's why we have onsite management and we work through those issues. Rents are set by CHAFAA, and you go through a process that says, if you make 40% AMI, here is what the resulting rent is. So that's a formulaic equation that you go through. So that's a few of the answers, but I know Jordan wants to go through a few of the site plan and related issues as well.
Thank you.
Some of the other comments from Mr. Palmer, what will rents be, which Marcus just addressed, the 2024 income limits were just released last week from HUD, and the rents actually came out yesterday or over the weekend. So the 60% area median income for a family of four, and this is for the Denver Metro, it's not specific to Westminster. Westminster is a high-income community, so I presume it's higher here locally. But the 60% income for a family of four is $78,240. The rent for a one-bedroom, that's 60%, which is what the average of all of the units at this property will be, ranging again from 40 to 70%. A 60% one-bedroom rent is $1,467. A two-bedroom is $1,761, and a three-bedroom is $2,034. You're probably saying, wow, that's really high. And you're right, it is. Those rents are between 12% and north of 30% discount to market rent, to bring that into comparison. That also doesn't include adjustments for utility allowances. So the rents that I just explained to you also include, give or take, $150 per month for resident utility allowances. So that's what the rents are. Mr. Palmer also made a comment about whether this property is in a metro district or not. It is not in the Uplands Metro District. And he mentioned schools. Building 70, which is the Crescent Building, the large one on the east side, is in a different school district than the other six buildings. The line literally goes right through the middle of the property. So I don't know if that's a, we don't know if that's something that can be changed or not. It is rather strange. It also puts us in two different taxing districts. So I think Nathan did a good job of answering that with the planning commission. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but can certainly provide more information upon your request. Some of the amenity comments, like Marcus said, we take no shame in providing high-quality housing for everybody. Your income shouldn't determine whether or not you have a different finish in your home or not. And so many of our amenities are city-required. Some of the other amenities, we're really proud to say, are market minus, not affordable plus, meaning that we like to build to a market standard. That's what the market builds, that's what we build for incomes of all types. The traffic on 84th and Federal, as Marcus said, you know, that should actually improve with the ultimate infrastructure improvement plan, especially with the traffic signal being installed on 88th and the intersection at 88th being somewhat realigned and expanded. One other comment, the parking is to the city standard. So if the city desires different parking standards, we would encourage the city to update those. And one of the main goals and learning lessons from prior development is we want to try and meet all of the requirements at the first, at the first opportunity. Some of the exceptions that you see in front of you, of the eight, were staff-directed and had an offsetting benefit or other compelling reason to pursue those exceptions. So parking, I think you will be quite pleased with how that eventually turns out with the solar carports, and we're looking to add more. Obviously, that's a cost consideration, but we're hoping to, over the course of the project, add to the count of solar carports, not decrease it. Lastly, the security concerns, as we mentioned at planning commission, we hire either manned security or off-duty police officers on an as-needed basis. And like any property, like any community, from time to time, things pop up. You heard a lot about drug dealing tonight in one of the city's neighborhoods. The nice thing about an apartment community that is self-managed is you have the opportunity to actually pursue, you know, private resources that can bring security in. So we do utilize, you know, overnight patrols quite often everywhere. We also utilize off-duty police officers to a much lesser extent when needed. The situation that some of the residents were speaking to tonight, that would be an off-duty police officer presence on a property like Overlook at Uplands. I believe that are, those are, that addresses all of John's comments. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any further questions from anyone? Seeing none, it is, oh, does city have anything else? Then it is 9:35, and I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion for A2. Mayor Protim.
I move to approve the official development plan for Uplands filing 3, Block 2, PA through C2. This recommendation is based on the finding that the official development plan generally complies with the criteria in Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Councillor DeMott?
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to pass item A2 under... It's been moved and seconded to pass item A two under number ten. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Haat.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-zero vote. Thanks for being here tonight. That brings us to Counselors' Bill number nine. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill number nine on first reading, to amend sections eleven dash two dash one A and section eleven dash four dash six B of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning occupancy standards.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded past Counselors' Bill number nine. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Normella.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
And Counselor Haat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-zero vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill number ten. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill number ten on first reading, to amend section eleven dash eleven dash eleven and eleven dash eleven dash thirteen of Westminster Municipal Code concerning incidental miscellaneous signs.
Is there a second? Counselor Haat.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded past Counselors' Bill number ten. Roll call, please. Oh, wait, question?
Yep. Being that this is like a fix of something else that we did that obviously didn't pan out the way that counsel at the time thought it would, I would really like us to make sure that I understand, before I vote yes on this, exactly how big of a sign now is going to be allowed and how much, like, if you could give examples. So the gold standard that was used at the time that we originally looked at this that ended up not being allowed was basically a campaign banner or even some of the banners that the city uses. Oftentimes, we have like the free meals over the summer. I've seen us do banners or different events. We've done banners. So I just want to make sure that I understand that this is addressing the concern that why it's back before us.
Absolutely, Counselor Demott. Eric Otzelberger, Operations Manager in Community Services. So it will vary, and in the agenda memo, tried to have an at-a-glance visual, very based on the zoning designation per the area we're talking about here. So the maximum area of freestanding banners for residential areas would be a hundred square feet. So that would be a ten-by-ten. In employment areas, office areas, it would be four hundred. And then in commercial or specific plan districts, those two being Westminster Station and downtown, it's six hundred cumulative, based on the allowances. And then, you know, it's kind of a two-factor deal. So that's the square footage, to answer the question. As far as the number of signs, in residential, it would be one per residential lots. And then for all the other zoning classifications, it would be one per one hundred linear feet. So sort of based on the scale of, or the actual length of the given lot, if that makes sense. But the primary answer is the square footage, that one hundred, four hundred, or six hundred, that's.
It does, but like, it does, but when you say one, so like example. So we're coming up on election year. You might have ten candidates that you're supporting because of the various different offices. So if somebody has, you know, ten of the standard twenty-six by thirty-six, I think is kind of the standard yard sign, is that going to be allowed? Or would this preclude that? Or is this just around banners? So like, making sure that I'm playing through this and the different things that you could come up with during a campaign season.
Correct. So this is on freestanding banners, and it's important to keep in mind the existing allowances by right for the up to five, six, six square feet, you know, two-by-three signage. So that's in addition to the freestanding banners.
I thought so, but I just wanted to be sure, because, like I said, I thought I understood what we did last time and ended up being much different than what I thought it was. So that answers all my questions, and so it sounds like you guys, you know, heard the concerns and have addressed them, and I appreciate the work on it for the, I think, third time. So thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Mayor Protem.
I just have a comment. Mr. Otzelberger knows I'm not in love with this one, because it does allow for more, I think, liberalness with temporary signage and more of it and more square footage of it. So, and I know staff is responding to the request from council regarding a specific signage. Honestly, if there were no commercial allowances in this, and this was just for residential, I could probably get behind it, but given we already have an issue with commercial temporary signage going wild in some areas, I'm going to vote no on it. But no offense to staff.
That's it. Roll call, please. Mayor Protem, Normella.
No.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Haat.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a four-one vote.
It is now nine forty-one, and we close this meeting, and we will now convene the Weta Board incorporating the roll call from the previous meeting. And is there a motion for the minutes of March eleventh? Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, twenty-twenty-four meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to the public hearing. Authorizing special legal counsel, this is just new business, it's not special. Sorry, I read the heading and I shouldn't. authorize special legal counsel contract for downtown Westminster project. Is there a motion? Mayor Protem.
I move to authorize the Executive Director to enter into an agreement with Murray Dahl Berry and Renaud LLP for work related to the downtown Westminster project and general urban renewal and eminent domain matters matters in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand.
Counselor Demott.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item three A one. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Board Member Demott.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Haat.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Normella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a five-zero vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I called everybody by the wrong thing. But it's nine forty-three, and we are adjourned out of this meeting, going to a post-meeting, and there will only be two executive sessions tonight, A and B. C has been taken off the agenda.
And thank you, Mayor. Before we go to the post-meeting presentations, could I ask that the Chair reconvene the council meetings so that we can take our vote on those exec sessions as part of our council meeting?
Yes, it's nine forty-four, and we'll reconvene the council meeting so we can discuss executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. The first executive session that's proposed is to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed economic development agreement involving a proposed affordable housing development, overlook at Uplands, and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four-six, four oh-two, four E one, and Westminster Municipal Code one eleven-three, C four, and seven.
Any questions?
I do have a quick question. It was mentioned earlier that Counselor Ireland might be joining us. Before we do this, do we need to make a motion to allow her to participate remotely?
We can, I think, do them in either order. But if counsel would prefer, we could certainly take up that question before we vote on the exec session title.
Up to you. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't forgot.
Okay, not forgotten. So with regard to the first executive session, that's the proposed title, Mayor.
Okay, and so I will ask each counselor to state their name, and if you're willing to go into this executive session.
Obie, is that a yes?
Steve Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Amber Haat, yes.
Counselor Ireland, yes.
She did tell me she logged on. I wasn't sure that it was going to work.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question for this exec session would be to permit Counselor Ireland to participate remotely pursuant to the municipal code.
Is this a question, or do we need a motion?
That's the question. Is there a motion, I suppose, to approve her remote participation in the exec session?
Counselor Demott.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Protem, seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of allowing Counselor Ireland to be in the executive session remotely, say aye. Or do we need a voice?
Oh, I think that's fine.
All those opposed? Okay.
Then there is a second executive session proposed for this evening, and that would be to discuss strategy and progress on a proposed development assistance agreement involving a proposed development at three-five-five-one West Seventy-first Place, and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four-six, four oh-two, four E one, and Westminster Municipal Code one eleven-three, C four, and seven.
Again, I'll ask, pull the council, state your name, and if you're willing to go into this executive session.
Obie, is that a yes?
Steve Demott, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Normella, yes.
Amber Haat, yes.
Counselor Ireland, yes.
And then the same question as for the remote participation in the second exec session. Does counsel approve Counselor Ireland participating remotely?
Counselor Demott.
A motion again, then, or just a question?
So the question is, is that acceptable to counsel? And I suppose, if you want to move.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that to allow Counselor Ireland to be remote into the second executive session also. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now can we adjourn?
Yes, thank you.
It is nine forty-eight, and we're adjourned to our post-meeting.
Counselor Ireland, you can stay on this.
The subject of housing, and specifically affordable housing, as we know, has been a headline for several years now. Every year, it seems to elevate more and more in collective consciousness, everyone's awareness. So we think this is great timing for our housing needs assessment. And of course, it's a big issue in the legislature this year, and our legislative team behind me knows that for sure. This document, we want to be really clear. It doesn't have all of the answers in it. It's not an answer book. It is a book which I think is chock full of data that helps us ask better questions and frames this really important issue for all of us in a more meaningful way and provides context to the subject. So again, just want to really highlight, you know, I really think the best use of data is when it prompts those questions and helps you to mine those insights that before, you know, but for reading the study or whatever subject it is, you find something new, some new point of data, or some new path to follow down. I personally, I know I'm a nerd, so I really enjoyed reading this and digging into all the data. It was fun. And there really are some fascinating nuggets in here. Stephanie and I, we did our best effort to pull out those great nuggets, and those are summarized in the memo that you have. So if you ever want to refer back to those, those are available as well. Of course, Stephanie's going to go through the major highlights of what was found with this great data. And again, you know, we just really feel like this is to help spark that conversation. It's a good, solid footing of data so we can move forward into action. And we also want to note that because of the conversations that we've observed and heard from this body and throughout the community, we did go back after our consultant had already launched the process, and we asked him to add an annex for senior housing data and information. That's such a very important, relevant subject. So you will find the study also contains an appendix specifically about senior housing analysis. And at the end of the presentation, we have worked with not only our team and Stephanie's group, but other departments to put together some near-term actions and also some longer-term actions. So we put our heads together collectively to think about it, and you presented some ideas of what we think could reasonably be activated upon, acted upon for the city, and really the near term, so the next six months of year, of things that we can really do to kick off solutions for the housing question. And as we said, we hope the presentation we give today prompts some really great questions, but we do ask that you respectfully, that you hold those questions till the end of the presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protown, counsel. Happy to be sharing the results of the housing needs assessment. It did take us a while to fine tune some of the data with our consultant, Matrix. What I hope to do tonight, as Lindsay alluded to, is really talk about that primary objective of why we do a housing needs assessment and the process we got to get to where we are today. So of course, we want to look at the current inventory changes that have happened in the last, the last time we did an HNA was in 2016, so it's pretty dated. Some big things happened since 2016, one of which was the global pandemic. And we wanted to see the impacts of that on our demographic. And we also have the new 2024 comprehensive plans. We were looking at the recommendations, the opportunities through that lens as well. We went through a competitive process and contract with Matrix Design Group, and as Lindsay alluded to, we did come back and said, we need a little bit more data on the senior housing. And so we have an appendix to that as well. So a few caveats about our data and being in Westminster. We're pretty unique as we saddle the two counties. So every methodology employed in every report we do ends up with different numbers. And so we're, that happens with our population is a good example of that. So this, this report is no different. Every time, when you have different sets of data, everybody has to kind of wash and bring that data together. It's just one of the joys of being in Westminster and having that data set. But Matrix did use accredited information. They, they did third-party stakeholder input with the local leaders that include many of council and city leadership and affordable housing developers in the city. They conducted a community, community survey, which is well documented in the report. And we looked at population, age, disabilities, commuting patterns, everything you need to do to kind of measure where we are as a city right now. Again, this, 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 the data that we're looking and discussing, discussing tonight is a snapshot in time. It's not, it's, it will evolve and it will change as we evolve as a city. I'm going to walk you through this, this chart because there's a lot going on with this chart. I'm going to start at the right because I think it's easier to read right to left. But if you just want to acquaint yourself, on the left axle is the number of units. On the bottom, it's showing deficits. And then, of course, above the bar shows the number of units available at any given affordability period. And it is incredibly counterintuitive. Why were we talking about deficits in luxury housing? Because that impact puts pressure on that middle tier and down the economic line. So people who, if you don't have a luxury item, they're going to go down to the next tier, drive those prices up. The people further down the line on the economic scale get less options, and so on, and so on, and so on. Long story short, we're about 300-plus units short, excuse me, 3,000-plus units at the incredibly affordable phase of about 30% AMI. And this kind of is represented again in our homeowner housing deficits. Again, that deficit in the luxury housing puts pressure all the way down. And what this side really tells me is that the on-ramp to homeownership is increasingly more difficult, right? So when you can't buy at the, at that lower tier where, you know, when you're coming out of college and you're getting started and you're just, you know, you don't have the equity, that on-ramp to homeownership and therefore building your own personal wealth equity is more challenging now than it was five, 10 years ago, which is a challenge for our residents. So throughout this document, there's some good news and there's some bad news. And some of the good news is that our, the household median income has increased since 20, the last decade. That could be for a lot of reasons. One, it could be, you know, just existing residents increasing their wealth. It could mean more affluent neighbors have moved in, or it could mean unfortunately that we've displaced lower-income residents. It's likely a combination of all of these three. Another vacancy, vacancy rates have fluctuated over the last 10 years, hovering around four, four or so percent. To have a healthy market, housing market, you need five to eight percent. That means we have an incredibly tight housing market. Again, it's making it hard for people coming into our city to find access to the housing. I'm going to put my economic developer hat on. I like to tie these things to the economy. And I'm going to channel my interstate demographer, Elizabeth Carter, and she often says, houses are where jobs sleep at night. And just like you need a variety of jobs to support your local economy, you need a variety of housing options for those jobs to live. Without that, you put additional pressure on your business community. They can't find local workers. They have to, you know, you have people going further and further out where they can afford, making it harder and harder to get in more commuting, more complex issues. So it's what, as Counselor Rizotti alluded to earlier, there's some complex issues here. We see that again here in the, for the housing realm, obviously. Inflation is another big one here. It's been all over our lives for the last couple of years. We're seeing it here too. I think the kind of shocking number is the equivalent of 23% increase in inflation-adjusted increases for sale home prices. That's a considerable uptick, and you see that in the renting market as well. Talk about cost burden. This is another good news, bad news slide. The good news is we have had a 4% decrease in cost burden and severely cost burden over the last 10 years. And just for anybody who may be listening, who don't know, don't know what cost burden is. Cost burden is any, any household spending more than 30 to up to almost 50% of their income on rent and mortgage. Severely cost burden is spending over 50% of their income on rent or mortgage. And as you could see, 45% of Westminster's renters are cost burden, and 22% of homeowners are cost burden. So what does that mean? That means their income is being, they're having to make some pretty hard choices between food, medicine, and transportation. And for some, some folks, they're just one bad instant away from being homeless. If they have a bad event, they lose their job, or they have a hospital bill, guess what their choices are. And, you know, unfortunately, that means they, they are, they're teetering on that homeless mark. So it's pretty significant for us to consider this as well. Senior housing. So again, nobody's getting younger in Colorado. At state, in channeling my interstate demographer, and that, that trend is going to continue. 20% of our population in the next decade or so is going to be over the age of 65. So additionally, seniors are disproportionately affected by their lack of affordable housing. Their onset income, so when you see those, those increases in inflation and market rates, they aren't able to keep pace with that. They don't really have a lot of options. Additionally, seniors have additional needs, memory care, assisted living. And the, the vacancy rate in a lot of our independent or assisted facilities is around 2%. Again, very hard to get access into those facilities. 82% of our seniors are cost burden, which is, you know, 80% of 3,000. So that's a significant proportion. And again, there's not a lot of options for them. And here's a little bit more on, on senior, senior housing and their disabilities and some of the uniqueness that comes with them. There is a gap of 750 memory care units and just under 2,000 assisted living units. And again, seniors have those different needs. They need memory care, people with dementia, people with Parkinson's. They need, they need more than we do, and we simply just do not have those options here in Westminster readily available. And again, we're not, nobody in here is getting younger. So this takes us to our recommendations, both near-term and long-term. So we are definitely taking our notes from the housing needs assessment, but we want to add a little bit more. So for the near term, we're asking counsel to give staff direction to consider these items and come back with a more thorough analysis. One is going to approve the, whoa, proposed ADU standards in the upcoming unified, unified code development. And that's coming to you soon. We really want to learn more about how we can expedite our affordable housing reviews. That is a non-financial incentive, helping those, helping projects through and without compromising safety, health and safety. Moving those, those projects through as, as quickly as we possible is very beneficial. We also want to consider waiving public land dedication fees for defined affordable housing opportunities. And we want to further investigate inclusionary zoning requirements for future development. Now, those are addition to what's in the HNA. Of course, we want to continue to support infill and adaptive reuse, especially in the TOD and expand that missing middle opportunity for homeownership. Senior housing, obviously, is a big one. The, we want to explore what affordable housing trust might look like to help incentivize affordable housing development in the city. And again, you know, the tiny home, working with developers and, and when we can, support that development. So I went through all that fairly quickly, and I'm available for questions.
All right. Thank you. There was a clock for a minute while you guys were starting to present. It's in five minutes, and it was, sorry, that's why it was lasting. Almost made it within five minutes.
Was there really a clock?
Really, for a second. I was like, oh my God, they started timing us. No pressure. So I just had a question, a couple of just clarification questions. If you can go back to slide four. This is, this is mind bending at, after 10:00 PM.
I, yeah, it is.
It's in the doc, isn't it in the document? Well, the language, I don't remember if I remember specifically if this graphic's in the document, but I know the language.
It is. Mayor Protown, if I could, it is actually, we clipped it from there. It's on, let me look at the glass one. It is on page 11.
Yeah. I, you know, when I read it, it made sense, but now I'm like, ugh. So for this, does this mean that we have a surplus of 50 to 80% or, yeah, like that significant of units? I don't understand what I'm-
So what's important to note is counterintuitive, is that it looks like there's, there is a surplus of those units compared only to the income of households that we have. So what this is saying is that somebody's occupying those. So it's people who are mismatched to that because we have a deficit of units for very deeply affordable. But we also have that deficit on the top end too, of market rate and luxury. So as Stephanie was saying, and if you look now opposite from left to right, that deficit of, and it's, again, it's counterintuitive. So you really normally feel pity for poor luxury buyers who don't have enough inventory. But they're, they find something because they're living here. We know they're here. So they're bumping down to the next highest thing, which bumps the market rate that you see go to the left again. They're occupying what would be normally workforce, bumping again down to something that would be affordable to someone in the 50 to 80% AMI. And it just keeps pushing, pushing, pushing the need down to the people who are the most needy. So it keeps, it puts more pressure upon those with the least amount of income because anyone at the top end has more options. And we see the same with housing as well. So there's, there's deficits, but that's also caused, maybe that, it's what causes gentrification in some cases, right? It's, you go and you say, okay, well, I can get this house, but you know what, I've, I'm a 200% MHI family and- two hundred percent um MHI family and I've got the money in the bank. I'll just go rip out the kitchen. I'll replace it. I'll blah, blah, blah. Raises property values and then the whole cycle keeps um compounding on itself. So it is counterintuitive, but the deficits in higher ends, those people have to go somewhere, so they're taking options just like it's, it's almost an analogy to the investors who are buying up these properties. It would be great first time homes. They can pay cash, they move quick, they've got money, they've got great credit. They swoop in and are taking away opportunities from people who would need those more, would be better suited, better matched. So we have this mismatch that you see. I hope that helps.
It does. This graphic does not. The time I look at it, I'm like, listen to you, I'm like, huh? And I look back at the graphic, I'm like, ah, okay. Um, so let's move away from this graphic. Fair. Um, uh, I had a question about the, our amount of cost burden um population. Is that, how does that compare, do you know, with the broader region?
Yeah, um, if I recall, it was, it was not too disaligned. We'll, we'll double check. Um, you know, we're at about uh, in fifty-five, forty-five range, and I don't think we were too far gone from the metro area as well.
Yeah, so um just citing the study on page fifty-six, so we have um current cost burden renters. Um, we have the counties. So Adams County, it's uh fifty-four percent are cost burdened or severely cost burdened. And in Jeffco, um, fifty-five percent are cost burdened, whereas we have forty-five percent.
Okay.
And um for, for ownership, mortgager households, um, it's about on, on par. We've got, uh, we're doing slightly better than the two counties. Adams County has thirty-three percent cost burden and Jeffco has twenty-five percent cost burden, uh, mortgager households.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, it could be helpful to um couch these numbers with actual numbers of people or households themselves because you know, renter versus own, I mean, I know what's sixty percent, sixty-six percent of our, our households are owner? Ownership?
Yes, about sixty.
Yeah, okay, um, and so that might be helpful because then we can sort of see, okay, then we have, you know, just to kind of get a picture of just how many households, and what kinds of households we're looking at for the cost burden. And that was really eye opening with um the senior. So thank you for going back and looking at that. That's since we're all, as Stephanie so delightfully reminded us, we're all marching towards that need, um.
The state demographer actually spends a lot of time explaining how, why we're getting older. It's because we're not migrating folks in or having babies. So that's why we're getting older. And we're getting older. So it's, sorry, I nerded out there.
No, but it's, 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 I, I thought it was very helpful. Um, one last comment on the last slide that you had up regarding the, um, move past that one, just on our actions. Um, one thing that I didn't see in the housing needs assessment was a focus on our publicly owned properties and how we can leverage those for um opportunities for land trust projects. Um, and or whatever to, to just try and facilitate some key, like if we really have a high need for senior, let's, and how do we take all of these and identify and narrow into what are our key priorities and needs for the city? Um, at AMI levels, potentially specific demographics, particularly if it's hanging into just supporting my goodness, our eighty-two percent of cost burden seniors. Um, and what was the other? Oh, I clearly didn't write it down. Um, oh, the other piece that I think would be helpful again, it kind of relates back to understanding what's happening with our, our neighbors and how we can support what they're doing, especially with respect to um people experiencing homelessness and you know, are we just looking at tiny home developments or are there like family shelter needs or, you know, so where's, where are the gaps? Um, and how can we be the most effective with the tools that we have? Thank you.
Thank you guys for the data wake up. Um, I did like the charts, actually. It makes sense. Uh, I, I read your first draft last December when it first came out and the new one. Thank you for going back and making the, the upgrades. Um, the one question I have is related to HOAs. I would personally just, just wanna see the full analysis on HOA fees. You know, if most of our cities are HOA, um, what we keep hearing is the, you know, the, the, there's a variety of these fees that they have to pay and some of them are out of control. I'm curious how bad that is and how that compares just to general geography. Um, and the splits, I don't think I saw much. There was a paragraph or two, I think, on HOAs in the report, but I'd like to double click on that. And the ADU standards, I know it's coming to us soon. I'm, I'd be very curious to see what the, what the, how that looks because I know, you know, that's the next, if we have a housing crunch, we need to be more flexible. So how those standards will be very critical, I think, going forward for the city to figure out how to live in this new world of low supply. Um, and make it yet give the flexibility for our working families to figure out what to do about it. Um, but thank you for the report. It was very, very insightful. Also, the shelters too. I, I'd be curious to, uh, the state of shelters, right, is a big deal in this area. The lack of or the lack thereof. So I'd be curious to know from a unhoused standpoint. If there's a analysis on the unhoused and shelter options and gaps, gaps be regarding the wraparound services too. Right? And I think we have city, they, so our neighbors are all doing, there's some kind of analysis on that. We could partner with them, uh, because if you're unhoused, it doesn't really matter what the borderlines are. We're one community. So, yeah, but thank you.
Counselor, um, Ireland, do you have anything?
Um, I do have a, some, a question. So I have noticed, um, that there is quite a few apartments for rent in our city, twenty, over twenty-three hundred in our area. And I wanna know why they're not being rented, if we need all this housing, what the problem is with giving these apartments rented and if we are not focusing on the right type of housing. And people don't really wanna rent these apartments. Um, so I don't think apartment rental area is lacking. But other things seem to be, so I'd like to have more focus on that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Counselor Demak?
Um, thank you for the presentation. One thing that you made, I had a question down and you kind of prompted it as far as the fact that people aren't uh procreating as much as they once were. So where does that get us in twenty years? So we're, we're, you know, the population's gonna change. So how are we taking that into account as we, we look at build out and what, what we're gonna?
So this is, this is a big question. It is where, how do, how, what do we build to, right? And the short answer is, we're in such a deficit right now that we will likely never meet that deficit. No matter if we build a three thousand houses, we would still be in a deficit even as we continue to age. So there is, you know, uh, as Lindsay alluded to, there's, this is, this is messy stuff, right? There aren't great answers. Nobody's figured out or fine tuned any of this. It's very different per jurisdiction as well. For Westminster, I would offer that we are in such a deficit that for us to try to build out, we, we will still never catch up to where we need or should be.
Well, and with that being said, I mean, it feels like no matter what data we have, it's kind of a dartboard. Like which thing out of the deficit should we pick? Like, I don't, I, you know, and I don't know the right way to prioritize it because I think it's, like you said, it's messy. So, um, just trying to think, think through this. Um, one of the things that you mentioned in your actions was about uh how fast things are going through the processes in terms of affordable housing. So are there things that are in the pipeline now that that would have helped that were examples of why you think that that's an action that we should take?
You know, I think we could use the, the Uplands today, um, that, that presented their O D P. I, uh, planning manager McConnell and I were discussing this. They submitted about a year ago. They've had five applications, but normally the application is three. So it's taken them a year just to get through the entitlement process. Now, sometimes that is because they didn't submit super quality or vague uh applications. Sometimes it is, it, the, it's just the complexity in which we're dealing with. Short answer is, we don't have a system to act, to, to move one project over the other. And so they get in the queue and, and they go through. Um, with an expedited process, we would rise raise these affordable housing projects to the top of the queue and give them priority.
So I'm gonna push back on you a little bit, just because of your own, your, your presentation, you shared about the other half of the market creating pressure. So why aren't we trying to figure out how to let everything go through our process faster? If you're telling me luxury housing is creating that negative pressure, I would think that we would want those things to go through just as fast because otherwise we're chasing our tail just off of terms of, of what you guys presented to us.
No, it's a, it's a fair point. Uh, I now think I could answer that question. I will pass that to.
I'll try. I will do my best. Um, so I would say you're, you're right. That's a great point and a great question. Um, but I would say the margins are the thinnest on the affordable and time e- equals money. So every time and every time we delayed and every time we pushed them back to go back to go, start over again, that's money they have to pay to a consultant and money, blah, 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 blah.
I don't, I mean, I don't disagree and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, the, the same, the same could be said on the other end. So I mean, I, I guess my, my bottom line point is we should try to be figuring out those efficiencies. I'm fine if, if we, because of, you know, how thin the margins are, I get that. Um, but on the other, other end, like it seems self-defeating if we're not making sure that we're not being efficient with the other things that we know are gonna, you know, come through and likely get passed. I, I mean, because with some level of certainty, you could look at these things and say they're gonna meet the criteria. That's, you know, what, all what you guys are doing a- ahead of time. So, um, the other thing I wanted to just make a point of on your slide six, when you talk about, and I just think this is just important for people in general and us to think about. So I did some, because you were talking about like what the, you know, the levers are and whether that's good news or bad news that people are making more money. If you look in terms of the value of the dollar between those years, you're talking buying power of a dollar then in twenty-twelve is really only getting you what would get you a dollar twenty-seven. So I mean, that buying power changes. And if you look at what that calculates out to with uh income, between those two incomes, really because of the, what's happened to the value of the dollar, that's only really about forty-one hundred dollar difference. So it's really not, I mean, some of that is changing. The costs of things are going up. People are making more money, but it's really, it's not doing anything. Um, and I just think that's a reality and I, that's not something we're gonna fix here in Westminster for anybody. But uh, when we think in terms of what we're trying to target, we really need to think about that because that's in twenty-twenty-two. If I look at twenty-twenty-four, they're saying it's more like a dollar thirty-five um to a dollar in twenty-twelve. So, um, and again, I know we're not, you know, that's the other part of inflation. It's not just things are costing more. It's that your dollar's not going as far. So, um, I do like the, the focus on, on the senior stuff. And I'm, you know, it's reassuring though, because one of the concerns I always have is are we gonna overbuild it to some point where we have too much stock of a certain thing in a couple of decades. And it sounds like you, you're not concerned about that. So that's reassuring um, as we go, go after that. Because I'm fully supportive of us going after that, but I just wanna think of the downstream effects of that when we're all not at this table anymore.
Well, and to go along with that, with the seniors, to me, we have within the senior population what's available to them. We have that hire where people can buy in and be there for their life with a home. And then if they need an apartment, then they need to go to um, whatever other assisted living. It's, it's all under one rap. So you have that, but they are, at, at that level, they are seeing more and more. I mean, Covenant Village for the first time had to start its own foundation because more and more of their residents are up against a certain income and they, they're either gonna have to move out or somebody's gotta help them. So, so you've got that in the, that kind of thing. And we have a few smaller ones, but we really don't have anything that meets that that median person that that isn't the deluxe, the ritz of the senior living. And I haven't seen anything come through that isn't anything but the senior ritz stuff. So I just think we need to be looking and figuring that out for the seniors.
Um, yeah, I would like to just second what um the mayor was saying, um, needing multiple types of housing for um our senior population. Um, also, um, I just wanna say, uh, the memo that you put out, um, wonderful. Uh, had a lot of great information. Um, one of my, the questions I do have is what percentage of our neighborhoods, do you know what percentage of our neighborhoods are in HOAs? And if that's something.
Sixty-six percent, the third aren't. Because I'm one of the thirds that isn't.
Okay.
At least that's what we were told when Nat was asked.
Okay, I couldn't remember. Um, and then, um, talking about the, the senior um housing where people buy in. So I was uh reading in your memo, um, like you were saying, the ideal uh vacancy rate is somewhere between five and eight percent. Um, our for sale vacancy rate is at two point seven percent, which means there, there's no houses to buy. Um, so it's, it's difficult to get into the housing market for cost, but then you, you know, add that there's no um houses for sale on top of that. Um, I think something like that would definitely help open um, some of uh, uh, the housing. And then I guess my question is, um, clearly we, we can't build to what's needed. So we will have to rely on some other neighborhoods. I know for us, um, one of our um issues is the water. Um, I'm learning that in other areas of Colorado, they don't have the same issues with water, particularly Weld County. So there's a lot of um developable, developable land in Weld County and they don't have the, the water issues that we do. So if we are able to build to our water and able to completely build out, um, is that gonna change these percentages much? Uh, you know, I think we'd have to really uh dig into that a little bit more than we did through this housing needs assessment. Yes, again, I still think we will have a deficit. Um, given the, the number that, where we are right now with the deficit where we are right now. Um, it's very unlikely that we'll be able to build three thousand units. So will it, will it decrease? Yes, will it help? Yes. Will it solve the problem? I, no.
And if I, if I could to add another point, um, is that it, that also lends itself to a mismatch. So we see that a lot in um the graphs. Um, I won't show them for too long, um, Mayor Proton, but.
With the other way. Go have a chocolate.
Yeah. But, um, what we're seeing, and also, so with the ownership housing, another thing to point out here, to your point about it being difficult for first time homeowners especially, I mean, coming up with that traditional twenty percent down and that's, that's nearly impossible for folks today. That's the price of what, down payments, the price of a house ten years ago. So, um, what this graph is also saying that we want. So, um, what this graph is also saying that we wanna share with you is that. Most homeowners today could not buy the home that they're living in now. So there's a lot more affordable housing than just the covenant restricted housing. It's housing that. People have been in for ten, twenty, thirty, forty years and have paid off and they're able to be be safe and be in a home that they own. Um, so we need to provide that on-ramp, but also as people are aging. Um, there is not going to, there's going to be homes coming available that will be not attainable for the population. So. Back to the mismatch concept, this is graph is a great representation of that mismatch. That we have so many, especially market rate units, ten thousand surplus. Um, someone's in them except for that small vacancy rate. So who's in them? It's people who. Either rolled a bunch of equity in and were able to buy it down, so it was affordable for them at that income level. Um, that median household income, or it's someone who's owned that home. So that's the value of the house today. But they might have bought it twenty-five, thirty years ago and it is affordable housing for them. So that's a little bit dig further into this graph here to help with what's, what's gonna happen in the future is that. Folks are gonna age out of their homes, are gonna go to assisted living or a senior living and. We're, we're gonna have a lot of large homes that might um exacerbate that mismatch that you're seeing.
And then, um, just, just to say, uh, on the procreation part, yeah, I have three kids. All three of them are saying. They're not having children and it's all related to costs. It's not because they don't wanna have children. Um, it's the whole being cost burdened, um, trying to live near their uh support system. And that, that, that's just off the table for them, um, because. It, it's two thousand dollars for a two-bedroom apartment in Westminster. It's, it, it's taken four people in a two-bedroom apartment to pay for it. Um, and so I think, um. If we could re- uh somehow leave um some of this. Uh, you know, housing being, you know, cost burdened by, by, um, I mean, that's, it's almost half renters. You know, that's a lot of people. Um, I think that's a big part of it, is it's just too expensive.
My grandson said, next month it goes up two hundred dollars.
Mayor Pretten.
Um, just a couple of other items that popped into my head. Um, one was. Just knowing that we do have a need for housing preservation and that we do have some projects that are. At risk of retiring out of their deed restrictions and so, um. I don't know how, I can't remember. It's been a while since I I read, read the, the housing needs assessment. Um, the bulk of it when we, when it first came out, so I don't remember all the detail.
So, um, we have our housing lift program and we had two that last this year was our uh first year. We, we gave. Half a million to each project, East Bay and Westchester to upgrade. Uh, and we again extended that affordability through.
Right, with the deed restriction.
Right. We have a couple of projects that are in the pipeline to, that will, if, if all goes well. Um, will, will be presented to city council again, uh, two projects close to a million dollars to, for the preservation. It is some, we're definitely experiencing some um built-up demand. To, to reinvest in some of those deeply affordable houses and make sure that they have that, that quality of living.
So as we transition into, you know, the next phase of our affordable housing efforts. It'd be i- ideal if we can get those deed restrictions in perpetuity and not um the thirty-year timeline. Um, and just, uh, I had a question about Prop one twenty-three. Obviously, we signed up for it. Um, and ex- expedited review is, you know, coming soon, in a couple of years. So yes, it's something we need to work on. Um, just curious to know if any of the projects that we are working with developers on will be submitting for grants.
So Uplands actually did submit, uh, the, the, the Prop one-two-three funding was severely oversubscribed. And they, e- even Uplands and the maker product also at the Uplands also uh applied and did not, uh, was not awarded. So we're hoping as, as the, the program evolves and some of that initial pressure and built-up demand. Starts to calm down, that our projects will be, uh, will be allowed to uh have access to that funding as well. But right now, there's more need than. Than what they could possibly su- you know, support.
That was predicted.
Yeah, and I think hopefully with those projects, I mean, there's twice as much money this year, right? And hopefully we can just, uh, I think we're doing two funding rounds, so hopefully they haven't given up.
There's a lot of legislation out right now, ca- uh, Representative Byrd. Uh, is uh actually presenting one that would allow uh uh expand Chaffa's uh light tax credit spending.
Authority too, so that's a super helpful tool.
Uh, when, when working in affordable housing, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, if I wanna come back to this one, oops, no. Um, this one, and again, I, 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 I'm seeking your direction. For our staff to, to cut, to research and dig into these items as well as some of the items that. Was, that were brought up tonight and come back to as soon as we can, um, with these items.
Thumbs up?
Great, thank you so much.
Councilor Ireland, you okay with what they presented to move forward?
I just have a thought. So. I have studied what, um, the city Denver has done and they've mandated this affordable housing. And it's made the developers have to build more luxury housing as far as apartments that go to offset the cost. So that makes their less middle. And that's what we're all been concerned about is the middle and that's why I think it's being cut out is because. We are pushing this affordable housing and so the developers have to build more luxury apartments and so. If we get less and less middle. And so we need to be aware of that, that's a problem too. And it's made housing in Denver more expensive pushing affordable housing.
Thanks. Has, has East Bay, I, I don't know who built them, but, um. I've known several who have lived there. And what I like about it is they create communities. So, so many of those folks um are widowers. And they've just gone overboard to make. That place a community so they feel like, um, it's family. Um. Do we have anybody like that? The, because it, it was a, it, it was affordable. I'm assuming it still is. Um, rooms are always kept up, um. They have their own kitchens, so if they want to, um, I, I s- have, um, dropped off meals on wheels there. Um, anyway, do we have anybody that does that kinda work looking at us? Coming to us saying they'll build it?
Not in the pipeline currently. Um, I would say the two projects that have been of focus that have had funding and, and positive men. Motion forward is the overlook at the Uplands that we, you approved their O D P tonight. And then the maker product yet to be named, also at the Uplands, which is seventy units as well. Those are the big ones. Um, we had a couple other pipelines, but they are experiencing funding gaps right now. And more so, you know, more than we could probably help with the tens of millions of dollars. Um, and so they're back at their, their financial drawing boards right now.
Okay, well, I think it was unanimous. You have our blessing.
Right, thank you so much.
And next, uh, our legislative folks, I'm sorry, it's ten forty-five before we can get here.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretten and Councilors. Today, six hundred and ninety-five bills have been introduced in the current session and staff have rev- reviewed a hundred and forty-two. Staff have identified two pieces of legislation for which staff is recommending a formal position. Staff prepared, prepared draft positions for each bill. Each contains a summary of the bill. A discussion of how the bill interacts with the city's legislative principles and a recommended position. The first bill is Senate Bill twenty-four dash one eighty-four. Support Surface Transportation Infrastructure Development. The bill establishes requirements for the Department of Transportation, the Regional Transportation District and the Front Range Passenger Rail District. To promote the expansion and development of surface transportation infrastructure networks. Staff are re- recommending an amend position. The recommended amendment is that this legislation does not supplant or interfere with efforts. To complete or extend the Regional Transportation District R T D beeline as currently planned.
Questions, comments? Be good, thumbs up? I don't see any thumbs.
You can give me like a high five.
I'm, uh, I'll go with staff's recommendation. Okay, you have, um, Councilor Ireland, do you have any thoughts?
I just.
I'm guessing I really, are, are they talking about the R T D down federal or what are we talking about as far as R T B?
So for specifics, I'm gonna ask Chris Chauvin.
Sure.
Our Senior Transportation and Mobility Planner.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. So this particular project, it's really. In my estimation, what it's doing is it's the state's way of extending the front range passenger rail into Fort Collins. So they can tap into another set of federal dollars to come into the corridor. So essentially what they're doing is they're saying, we're not going to just simply look at the, the, the short connection between Longmont and Denver. We're gonna go all the way to Fort Collins. Then it opens it up to another set of funding through intercity rail. So essentially what you're doing is just simply opening up a new book of funding is what they're trying to do and. The, the staff and discussions that we had, we decided on the amend, talking with you tonight. Because we wanna make sure that front range passenger rail does not usurp or discontinue the beeline. Because that is our ultimate focus, is to try to still get that beeline put into play. I will add just a very quick caveat at the very end of this. Uh, this wasn't exactly where your discussion was going. But one of the things that, that the staff also has concerns about is the managed lanes. Toll revenues that come in on twenty-five, on I seventy, on thirty-six. The, the bill is vague about if those funds would be steered into front range passenger rail or. Would be maintained on the corridor in which they are collected, which is where they're supposed to be. Like thirty-six is supposed to stay on thirty-six and twenty-five is supposed to stay on twenty-five. But the bill is vague, almost silent on that issue. So that's another issue that we're tracking to see if it takes us anywhere. But Councilor Ireland, to your question, this is the front range passenger rail connecting into Fort Collins. The uh, the federal project that you refer to is a B R T project, which is independent of this discussion.
Okay, so how is this helping or hindering Westminster?
Well, I think uh ultimately what it comes down to is my, or the earlier point that we brought up, that we wanna make sure that whatever the state's choosing to do. In order to open up new financial avenues for front range passenger rail, that it discontinues or sets aside the beeline. We wanna make sure that funding for the beeline remains strong and focused. We wanna make sure that that project gets built, uh, ultimately. Um, now, again, we could get into semantics and details at another time through a work session or something like that, but I think that's the reason why. The staff went with an amend position in this case, cause we simply wanted to make sure that the bill recognizes that the beeline still needs to be built.
Okay, thanks.
Um, just being on the front range passenger rail board and I definitely want us to be able to, uh. Succeed in getting something. And so, um. I, you know, I conflicted over this one because I just feel like, you know, if we can, um, get something going, but. I- if we can work to get at least part of our, um. Uh, beeline extension achieved through the passenger rail. I don't know if they're two different things versus, you know, because I, you know, there's this particular bill and how, you know. It was like, I won't say robbing Peter to pay Paul, but you know, it's just, you know, that. I do worry about it. The, the passenger rail does allow, you know, if they can get it in place, it does prove out some ridership. To help us, but I think it's the realist. The. The funding, if we leave it alone, R T D is supposed to go through and, um. Fund our, our peak rail service. Um, I think it's actually gonna be delivered a lot longer out. Than, um, passenger rail. So it's like kind of something versus nothing in this near future game.
I would, I concur with that. I, the front range passenger rail is trying to take advantage of, of I I J A funds through the federal government. And those expire in two and a half years. Now, the R T D funding for beeline doesn't exist at all. That would probably come through Federal Transit Administration, which is a. A completely different set of categories of funds that we could tap into. The only other thing that I will leave this with you is that as it's conceived today. We're not seeing any evidence that front range passenger rail would actually stop in Westminster. That it would come down from Boulder and go directly to Denver and vice versa. Whereas the beeline, if we do extend that, will have stops, of course, in Westy, we'll have it in Broomfield, we'll have it in. Boulder Station, et cetera, as it continues up the north. So. I wanna put that caveat out there that as much as the state is really pushing hard to get federal, federal, excuse me. Front range passenger rail put into play, we may not see the benefit of that. Uh, when they get their operation plan and everything gets put into play, that, which we're still waiting for that, for that work to happen.
Yeah, cause I, definitely not happy if we don't get something.
Exactly.
Um.
This at least to me leaves the door open.
Correct. That's a great, that's a great way of summarizing everything that I just, that's a great way of saying it.
Cause we're paying for it right now.
Yeah, and I think.
And have been since two thousand and four.
Right, and I think maybe it's stronger as regional partners, Broomfield and others who are being overlooked in that.
And have spent millions of dollars at.
Yeah.
Our three T O Ds and everybody else's T O Ds. We built for what they said was coming.
Yeah.
And it's not here.
Yeah.
David, are you okay? So do I have four, at least four thumbs?
I have to say, I don't wanna get all, but.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I realized I forgot to introduce myself. It's late.
It's okay.
I'm Erin Barrett, Policy and Budget Administrator. So our second bill this evening is House Bill twenty-four twelve thirty-nine. Single exit stairway, multiple family structure. The bill requires counties and municipalities to adopt or amend their building codes to allow a single exit to serve no more than five stories of a multifamily residential building. Staff are recommending an opposed position.
So. They have to put outside staircases? Is that what they're doing?
So I'm gonna have our Deputy Chief, um, Deputy, Deputy Fire Chief oppose to speak more specifically to the.
I'd hate for you to be here all this time and you don't get to speak.
I know, so we have to, have to give a question.
Getting your, your protection, Councilors. Um, yes, this is basically to, uh, the bill is to have one stairwell instead of, uh, what the code requires as far as two stairwells inside. Inside of an occupancy, uh, multifamily apartment-type building, um, of five stories or less. So there's no specific uh language for an exterior, um, stairwell or anything for emergency use.
So you're saying to reduce it to one?
Yeah.
You wanna reduce from the current two, which is the standard in the code, to having just one stairwell in, in the inside of an apartment building?
Why? What does the bill say? What are the pros about that?
I believe there is, uh, I believe it's about affordability and trying to, to reduce the footprint for some affordability.
To me, it's about saving lives.
Well, we would concur with, obviously with the city statement and this has also been opposed by the Colorado State Fire Chiefs and by the Fire Marshals Association of Colorado. Because of life safety factor.
It doesn't take a scientist to figure that out.
Yeah.
Are, are we okay with, um, opposing?
Yeah, this seems really irresponsible.
I, yeah, I am.
You've got unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Sleep well. Get home safely. Okay.
Thanks, ma'am.
Reason for executive session? Reason for executive session?
Uh yes, Mayor, as council voted in the open meeting uh earlier to convene two exec sessions this evening. Um I think that the clerk will need to basically conclude the broadcasts this evening and start up a separate recording for our executive sessions.